We have to manage because of outside organizational control. Second one was proactively manage outside city decisions that affect our organization. Third one was educate citizens with rules or laws we are to follow but don't control. And then two bullets under that, advocate for changes or slash repeals to rules, laws that are not in the best interest of to Westminster. And the second bullet was advocate to support what helps Westminster. The fourth one was clear communication to citizens with the pros and cons of legislation we don't support or support. So the two that we came up with was clear communication to Westminster residents and businesses of non-city legislation which impacts Westminster and clear communication to Westminster residents and businesses of city ordinances and resolutions and rules which impact Westminster. You can throw them all out and start over or stay with cause-driven holistic solutions.
Good options there. Thank you. Well, we're going to go ahead and get started this morning.
Quick question.
Yes?
Nancy, what was the first one, the number one, the first thing you said on that list?
The first option.
The very first one?
Advocate, educate, and then a slash mark, advocate slash educate citizens on issues we have to manage because of outside, because of outside the organization control.
Thanks.
So we'll revisit those when we get to the guiding principles. Yeah. I put them on a separate sheet. It could happen.
Oh, great. Thank you. So we need to do three things today. First, we want to revisit the work that we did yesterday. Shannon and I, after dinner, spent a little bit of time drafting some goal statements to go with your strategic priorities. And so we're going to present the vision back to you, the mission you came up with, the goal statements we drafted for the strategic. The second piece of work is to work on the objectives. And because you did so much great brainstorming yesterday afternoon, we came in today with hard copy sheet of all of your ideas that you can refer to when you're in your small group discussions coming up with objectives for the strategic priorities. So that's the second thing. And then the third thing is to get some guidance on the process for evaluating, updating, reporting the progress on the strategic plan. So that's our agenda for the day. I'm turning it over to Shannon. She's going to lead us through these next pieces.
So we're going to start here with reviewing the work that you all did to craft a new mission statement. And Michelle and I, what we did, we populated the slide with the mission statement that you put together and then also have the core services mandated and then important quality of life desired by residents. So your mission state. All right. I'm not warmed up for small dances this morning, so come on.
Did you bring the slide deck and hard copies?
Yep.
Yep, they've got it.
Oh, they've got it. Okay, good.
Perfect.
That'll be our backup as.
Hey, treat.
Perfect. Thank you, Rich. All right. So Westminster, Westminster's job or purpose is to provide core essential services that give our community the opportunity to thrive. We've got some slashes in here for some decision points from everyone. Like Westminster's job or Westminster's purpose.
I think really purpose will encompass it better.
Okay. Jody, can you share what you shared with me yesterday about the word essential and how we might want to stay away from that?
Yes, thank you. Essential is often used in the city and in the state regarding essential services during either emergencies or labor situations where, so has some specific legal definitions, whereas core, we've actually used in the past, it passed in this way when we went through the Great Recession, there was a very, very exhaustive exercise to identify core services then, which are different now. But the word and term core was used in the sense, I believe, council's intending here. So I would recommend that we use core and avoid inadvertent implications of using the word essential.
Thank you.
So Bruce said he liked Westminster's purpose. How do others feel about that?
I agree.
Well, Nancy agrees. Yeah, Rich is nodding.
I think job, in my mind, can be a specific task. Purpose is a greater.
Yeah, driven for a greater good. Yep, yeah, okay. Yeah? All right. What do we think about identifying these core services? Police, fire, municipal courts, water, sewer utilities, roads? And then things that are important to the quality of life and desired by residents? Parks and rec, economic resiliency. Are there any other thoughts or feedback on those?
I still just have a hard time not having everything else that feeds those core services because you can't responsibly say that you're providing those core services unless you are ensuring through your activities that you are feeding and bringing in the revenues for those services. So like economic resiliency, I think should be a part of what we are mandated to do because if we're not watching our purse strings and making sure we're putting money into our coffers, we are not doing any of those and then we are shirking our responsibilities.
I don't disagree, but I don't know that I would put it in a core service. So how do you put that that's something that's our responsibility, but it's not a service that we provide? It's something that drives the services we provide. So if we're looking about like core services, is that something, you know, I just don't know where it fits. I mean, because I could say, I mean, there's other things too, but they aren't the service. Like I think mental health is important and it helps across all of those things. And there are things we can and can't do as a city and that, and some of that's taking care of our own people. But it's not the service that we're providing. So I guess that's just, I agree with you. I just don't know where it fits.
Is it like a core function?
To me, that is a distinction. To me, a function is different than a service.
But I thought the mandated and the quality of life, all of those were going to be included for our guiding principles. So it's there, it's just, I don't think it's.
Which?
I look at it, I look mandated at what by law we're supposed to provide.
Well, and I guess the guiding principles, to your point, those are kind of, I mean, those could be more of those functional things. It's how, how we go about providing those services. I mean, I definitely want it in there somewhere. I just don't know if it fits this list. I would see that it would fit the guiding principle as a, as a way that you want to go about providing these things.
So I have a question. Do you feel like you need to spell out your core services in the strategic plan? If you do, then this is important to nail this down. If you don't, that is, that is a conversation that you could set aside and have more deeply at a later time.
I think if you don't, then you leave to interpretation what core services are provided by the city. And I think that's where, you know, you, you have unreasonable and unachievable expectations from the public because if we're saying, these are the five things that we absolutely are in charge of in our stead and this is what we will provide to residents as the city of Westminster, it's easy for us to educate them around it. And if we don't, then that's where you get into all the other things.
Yeah.
So, Bruce had a comment?
Bruce, go for it.
So why don't we put in on the mandated side, really taxation? Does that?
No, because what are you taxing? If you aren't doing your job to create economic revenue streams, then what are you taxing?
We're doing the taxation to support the police and fire and roads.
So you're taxing, well, you know, eight percent of zero is still zero. So we have to, I don't know if there's some, but I understand where you're, what you're trying to add in. But, you know, maybe there's like core services and core functions or something that support those services.
I like the idea of maybe have, we keep the core services because these are mandated, these are things you have to provide to your community. But what's not mandated is how you fund the provision of those. Because you could do it through sales tax, you could do it through increasing property rates. I'm not suggesting that. But there are a variety of different ways to provide the core services. So maybe that core function gets at the provision of making sure you have the ability to provide.
Right. Building off of what Sarah said and trying to make a distinction between these two things. What if you had, what if you listed core services and then said, said, and supported by these functions? And then you list the functions? Because then it recognizes that those functions are foundational and essential to being able to provide the core services. And so you're, you're naming what you're mandated to do and you're also talking about the functions that have to happen in order for that service delivery to be real.
So just to, I actually agree with Sarah here. Citizens expect Westminster to manage their money properly. We cannot responsibly relieve out economic resiliency. It is a core service because we are, they pay us taxes and we are expected to manage it properly. So I think definitely I would support that, that it needs to be a core, a core service.
It's not a service, though. I mean, you're not, you're not, it's not a service that they tangibly look at. It's something that we're doing, providing all these services. It crosses over every single one of those things. And I mean, when you talk about mandate versus not, this is the things that a city government, that the citizens, especially in the state of Colorado, is the whole consent of the government. They have decided this is how much tax dollars that we're going to allow you to collect on sales tax and that's our primary function. Same with the property tax we collect. At some point, the citizens had to say, we're okay with that. And then they expect us to deliver these services under that guise. So I agree, they expect us to manage that with what they gave us. But I mean, I still just don't see that as a service because we're not, we're, we're providing these services through being financially, you know, smart with their dollars. But I don't think, and I think that we have to provide the, I'm trying to think how it was put yesterday. We had talked a lot about creating the environment where businesses can thrive. So to me, that's the things that a city can, can do and has in their stead, such as business licensing, making sure that our planning department is working well with somebody who's bringing in a new business, being that connector that we often are versus the people who do, do things for people, whether that's through federal programs, connecting them to our chamber. Those are all things that, they're not services that the city's actually providing. Does that, I mean, that's the way I look at it. I don't, I just don't know how that would fit. I think it's more of a function versus a, a service we're providing. Because if I think service, I would think, I'm going to call you and you're going to make, knit me a costume for my doggy. Like that's, that's a service that you've provided.
But that's part of our mission, right? Like that, that's part of our purpose for existing is everything you just said. So if it's not a service, even though I think it is a service, because what else would it be? Then we need to add in function in the mission statement.
I think, so the way that I see it, kind of your mission statement sets up the what? What's the city's purpose? What are you providing to your residents, to your community? And then everything that follows and all the rest of the work you did yesterday is the how. And I think that's what you guys are getting at, is the how you're providing these.
I think, I think Obie just voiced exactly what I was about to say was that if it's, if we can say to provide core services and either activities or functions that give our community the opportunity to thrive. I think activities can be like a little more general, but, yeah.
Okay. And I am fine with what it is. I just offered the taxation if it fit Sarah's purpose, which it didn't seem to fit.
Or we could use revenue. But I look at the taxing part and the income part, it's like the body. We, we function, we move around, but we don't have to tell our body to breathe and for our heart to be. It's, it's, it's what, it's how we fund. Without that, we have no city.
But we do have to go search for food. And that's what that is.
Well, and we can get, we can make, we can make these pillars or we can make them two-by-fours and have hundreds of them. And that's what, that's what I do not want to get into.
Well, would you guys be okay with adding into the mission statement that our purpose is to provide core services and activities that give our community the opportunity to thrive?
I don't, to me, I don't know what that means. I mean, it's too broad and that's the problem. Core services are things that we cannot do without. And I'm not saying that all those things aren't something that the city can do, but they're, I hate to put it this way, but they are afterthoughts. Because if we don't fund these things, then it all falls apart. We, I mean, we have to have these core services and that's why you define them. Because in an instance of like the Great Recession, the city knew, here are the things that we're going to have to fund and other things are going to have to suffer because these are the things that we absolutely are mandated and are promising, we're going to make sure we, we service. So that's, I don't, to me, I don't want to, and obviously I'm just one vote in this all, but I don't want something so fluffy that we could fit anything under it. And that's the problem when you try to encompass the things that are additional. And I'm not saying they're not good and I'm not saying that to some extent the community doesn't desire them. I just don't think at the end of the day, there are things that have to be as a core service because they could go away or we could do, you know, even like, Arvada uses Apex versus doing it on their own. And I'm not advocating for that. I'm just saying it's because it's not a core service as important as it might be to people.
But Dave, you, you said yesterday, past councils laid the foundation from a financial standpoint during the pandemic that if we didn't have the savings or the economic resiliency already built in, we, we, the city would have collapsed. We were ready because being resilient makes us a stronger city.
We were ready for our core services.
We did all that under sustainability as a city.
And that, that's still there. The point is these pillars are the core services that we have to provide. I'm not saying any of that stuff's not important. I'm saying that when it comes to a mission statement and a strategic plan, you have to be very specific about here is our purpose and what we're here to do. If, if not, then it's just, it's kind of the same and you don't have the same kind of clear direction of what's important.
But by providing those core services, we're not giving the community the opportunity to thrive. It's not the whole equation.
I see what you're saying, but I see that as an opportunity, as to define it in a pillar, as our quality of life, which is one of our pillars, right? Because recreation, economic resiliency, all of those extra things provide a quality of life.
I, I see it in our, in our strategic plan if we just get there, move past this. I'm okay with what that slide says.
What I take umbrage with is the, I don't think that the quality, that economic resiliency belongs in quality of life. It's like parks and rec, you know, sure, like that makes, but economic resiliency I see as more of a core function. So I just wouldn't want to classify it as, it, it's like a, you know, like to me, well, when I think of things that add to quality of life, I feel like it's expendable and I don't think that it's expendable.
So a couple suggestions, see if we can move us along and not get stuck here. We could, so the mission statement is going to be there and then below it, you may have a, two short paragraphs, right? Or two short, two or three short sentences that say, our core services are doot, 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 doot. And those core services are supported by these functions, doot, doot, doot. So there's a description there. The other way you can get at that economic resiliency, which is so foundational to being able to have a city government, is to have it there listed as a core function, but also to have it woven into the guiding principles, as I think Nancy was suggesting earlier. So that's one way of dealing with it, that, that calls it out and recognizes its importance.
I would, I like the idea of having it as part of the mission statement because it says, this is our mission is to do these core services in a way that provides that economic resiliency. And that's, that is wide enough that it captures all those things that we do in the economic standpoint as a city. So I don't know if that meets your needs, but I would be comfortable doing something like that. Because I, I agree that, that fingerprint or that lens has to be on, on our plan somewhere. I just don't see it as a core service.
I don't agree with that. Sorry. It's, we, we talked to too many people in the city during, I mean, pretty recently, a bunch of us, to leave this out as something, as part of, that's not, to, to, to leave something like this out when we're talking about our purpose and reason for existing. This needs to be in it. I'm just one vote, obviously, but I can't morally leave this out.
But if it's in the mission statement, we're not leaving it out. We're just not putting it as a core service. I, I guess I, we're arguing apples versus oranges. I don't really understand what the, what the beef is.
I think the beef is that economic resiliency is a core service and we need to treat it as such.
I guess then you're probably going to have to pull. Otherwise, we're going to keep going around. It's my opinion.
I agree.
Mayor Protem, how did you add in economic resiliency?
I think it needs to be in the mission statement. And you certainly don't want me being the one wordsmithing it because it would be clunky.
I think we can definitely, what I'd suggest is that we, Michelle and I, think on it a little bit as we move through the slides, but I'm thinking like that Westminster's purpose is to provide core services that give our community the opportunity to thrive through economic resiliency or kind of weaving it in like that. So describing how you're going to provide these opportunities. So I think we can wordsmith that a little bit. And then, Obie, to your point, if maybe we walk through the rest of the work that everyone did yesterday to see where else that economic resiliency is woven in, if it feels like it's not solid enough for you and present enough there, we can revisit this conversation. Does that?
It sounds like there's some support for weaving economic resiliency into the mission statement and then we go through the rest of the work and revisit. Do we have support for that?
Thumbs up. Thumbs up. Thumbs up.
All right.
We got it.
All right. So let's go to the vision statement. Right. So what Sarah was kind enough to capture for us yesterday in our discussion, Westminster is a city of beautiful, safe, well-maintained neighborhoods and destinations with a vibrant, diverse economy, rich and resilient environment, and a strong sense of community and belonging. Reactions. You like it?
Yes.
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up from Nancy, Rich, Obie's nodding his head.
We really, yesterday, we were struck by how many of those words were just so concretely descriptive. And so this vision statement is not fluffy, it's concrete. It tells you.
Give you a really solid direction of what you want to see.
A solid vision of what you, you would like your community to be.
All right.
Yahoo.
Yahoo.
And it's aspirational enough.
Yes, it is.
Yes, absolutely. It gives you a lot of room to move.
Well, and that's one of the things you want to have. That's evidence of a really good vision statement too, is that it's aspirational. All right, guiding principles. Oh, my gosh.
Everybody take a deep breath. Guiding principles. All right. So current guiding principles, collaboration, partnership, and unity. Stewardship, which Obie, I know, don't grimace too hard on that word. And sustainability. Transparency. Diversity, equity, inclusion, and opportunity for all. Another, don't grimace. Innovation. And then everyone's favorite phrase of the weekend, cause-driven holistic solutions. I know you did some research and I know Michelle also has some things to share on it.
I do. And what I thought, it's kind of following Bruce's lead from yesterday of kind of looking up what these words mean, you know, what, let's, let's go back to the definition of these so we can understand what are we really trying to say here? So I think what it might be helpful to do is just to kind of go through what's there and I can elaborate when I researched and looked at different definitions, what, what came up. So collaboration, really the definition of collaboration is creating something together. Some synonyms are alliance, connection, relationships. Partnership is about the sharing of resources, the sharing of risks, the leveraging of skills. Okay, so that's kind of the other words that you would use to convey collaboration and partnerships. The next one, stewardship. Stewardship, the definition of stewardship is taking care of something, the careful and responsible management of something entrusted to one's care. That's the meaning of stewardship. Careful and responsible management of something entrusted to one's care. Sustainability, definition is use without being used up or destroyed. Methods that do not completely use up or destroy a natural resource. Able to last for a long time. Use of resources so they are not depleted and permanently damaged. Next one, transparency. Clarity. Clearness. Making something obvious or very easy to understand. Diversity, oh, I didn't define diversity. I think that one's pretty obvious, but equity. Fairness or justice in the way people are treated. Even-handedness, fairness. Impartiality. Inclusion, the act of being included in a group or a structure. The act or practice of including and accommodating people who have been historically excluded. And then what did I, I did, instead of innovation, we looked at innovative, having the skill and imagination to create a new thing. Clever, creative, imaginative, ingenious, intuitive, resourceful, and productive. So those are the kind of extra words that help describe what some of these words are supposed to mean. So with that, how would you like to go about these guiding principles?
Bruce?
I think they're good and I really like your innovative instead of innovation. Okay? But I truly want to elevate thrift and we can put it next to stewardship. Because it was great that you had the definition of stewardship and in the definition you read, there was no economy, there was no frugality, there was no mindfulness, there was no thrift. And I think, well, I want to express to the public that this is going to be thrift, that we're going to run this city in a prudent manner.
So you would put stewardship and thrift together as a guiding principle?
Yeah. Stewardship, comma, thrift, and sustainability.
So one of the things that we were talking about last night and kind of kicking around yesterday is, I think we spoke with the mayor about this during a break, maybe having two or three words and then a colon and then a short sentence that describes what we mean by that, using some of the wording from the definitions that we researched last night. Because that way you've got the words as the short part of it, but then you have a little bit of description so people have a concrete idea of what you mean by it. Would that, because Nancy, when you came up with the cause-driven, you know, you're, you actually had a full sentence that described what that meant. So would you guys be open to that so those guiding principles are actually clear?
Billy, would it make it too long? Because don't we want brevity? Isn't that what we're trying to do?
And it's really the same thing that you're, you're doing with the, with the, the staff did with the core values and I think they'll, they'll go back and revisit those, is you have the two or three short phrase that, you got the descriptive words there, but a very short phrase or sentence following it. You could list them without the sentence, but I think if you want to be crystal clear about what these guiding principles mean, I think having a little extra there is not a bad thing because then somebody can pick it up and they can say, okay, I know what they mean by sustainability. It's, it's right here.
Yeah, and I think having, right, if you look at the brains, whoa, that's different. Okay. If you look at the brainstormed ideas below on the, that we do have a lot of the things that I think would be great to be able to weave into the definition. So like thrift and efficiency in government is one of them, right? And that could be under stewardship and sustainability when we're describing what that means.
Right. But that's exactly, really, but that is exactly why I want it elevated to a word within the guiding principles. I don't want to be in the definition. I want it to be way up on top.
I get, yeah, I think I'd still want to have what we mean by thrift defined.
Bruce, you also used the word mindfulness. Are those, is that a good synonym for thrift?
That was, that was a huge mistake on my part.
Okay. Just asking.
Don't put that in there.
Why don't we do this? Would you give us the latitude to take the guiding, so is there, let's start here and then I'll offer what I think would be a good path forward. Is there any, like, so if we change innovation to innovative using the definition that I provided and then we're going to take one I provided, and then we're gonna take one of Nancy's definition for cause-driven holistic solutions and weave that in, is there anything on that list that you would get rid of?
Can I hear those recommendations again? Now that my coffee's kicked in a little?
The caffeine is pumping.
You know, just for perspective, I looked up the word thrift, and the definition I found was the quality of using money and other resources carefully and not wastefully.
Bingo.
I like that.
Well, that's cool.
I like that.
Which is, I would wanna be part of that government.
Yeah.
How did they encompass that into the word thrift? That sounds so elegant.
Well, that could be in the definition, right?
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read Nancy's ideas. Jan, why don't you do it? Read those. But I want you to consider that question, if we can agree on, you know, kind of what that definition for that last one is, I wanna know if you're okay with keeping those guiding principles with these edits that we've talked about.
Okay. So, clear communication to citizens with the pros and cons of legislation we don't support or support. Clear communication to Westminster residents and businesses of non-city legislation which impacts Westminster. And clear communication to Westminster residents and businesses of city ordinances and resolutions and rules which impact Westminster.
So, to me, those are all ways that you're doing what we were trying to get at with that guiding principle. It's not necess, I mean, because the idea behind that was if, say, for example, you talk about certain populations of homelessness that have drug dependency or mental health issues, and then we're just trying to house those people, we're not getting at the root cause of it. And so that's just one example, so how do we always make sure that, or the water plant, if the driver is of the big increases was, you know, moving it to new property and building a whole new plant, then what's, you know, going after those root causes? So I like all those, I just don't know if it's wide enough that it gets what we were after.
Well, I do know, cause-driven holistic solutions is not gonna be on the, in my mind. I have no clue what that meant.
Well, what if it's like, because I think the things that Nancy laid out could be part of how we do it, but it just, it feels like holistic solutions could still be there, but it's, I mean, I am taking this as that we're searching for solutions that get at the root cause. So back to Rich's, but like, that's, right, we're not doing, we're not looking for Band-Aid fixes. So how to say that?
And I remind us, this was last council stuff, we don't have to take it.
That's true.
Right, but I think all of us wanna, like, we don't wanna just do Band-Aid solutions, right? We wanna figure out how to...
So taking Rich's root cause solutions and putting a colon next to it and saying something, something like, ask the why and solve the problem at the source, you know, it's just solving the problem at the source, I think is really the, what we're trying to get at here with the root cause solution. So something about that, solving the problem at the source.
Solving problems at the source.
Where were you yesterday?
Where were you a year ago when we came up with that?
Well, I think that it's the root cause that trips people up, because it sounds so jargony, you know? But that's really what you're doing, solving problems at the source.
Like I said, I'm never the one to wordsmith, but it was my idea. I mean, I was part of that council, and it was, I was the one that wanted to come up with something where we were actually going after the problem, not just putting out spotfires, because to me, that's a waste of time.
It was a great discussion.
Yeah, but it's just a hard thing to encapsulate in a couple of words.
I do like the, I like holistic solutions, because it means that you're thinking about how to handle things from, you know, kind of the A to Z, or from like tackling things, like homelessness is, you know, you wanna get people to never get onto the streets, right? So what do you, what can you be doing there? And then, and then when they are on the streets, like, you know, dealing with mental health, or if it's drug addiction, or if it's financial instability, or some other, you know, domestic violence, like helping to get people off the streets at, you know, when they are there. So it's like this full spectrum. So that's when I, that's what I think about with holistic solutions, although that's probably, I don't know, whatever, that's maybe not the best example, but, so if it's like holistic solutions that, I don't know, tackle, it's a terrible...
If we're having this much problem, the public is never gonna get it, so we gotta get words that mean something to everybody.
Yes, true, very true.
I think that the word source could be a problem, trying to find synonyms, because I don't know if that's universally understood, and it could be ambiguous what the source, what source is. People may have different views of what a source is.
At this point, I'm willing to just drop it, because this is the difference. Like, I really don't understand why it's so difficult to come up with something that's just, we're going after root causes. Like, I like what you said, because it's just, we're gonna actually go after the problem. Otherwise, it's like, I don't, why address the problem if you're not actually getting rid of the problem that caused the issue?
What did you say?
Solve the problem at the source.
I love it.
Well, let's do this. You've given us a lot...
I'm not stuck on any words right now either, so...
Because there's these, we're tending to kind of swirl and churn around the guiding principles. You've given us a lot of guidance. We've got, I think, enough here to come back to you with these kind of restated, where there, we have words that describe what they mean. The only other question I have was, Nancy, you captured something in your attempt to solve the problem with the cause-driven holistic solutions, but you were really focused on open communication, and I'm wondering if there needs to be an additional guiding principle around communication, or does that fit within the concept of transparency?
Well, for this one piece, it would mean, are we the ones that only know what the problem is and the community doesn't know what we're working on? I mean, that's where I was trying to, after that discussion yesterday, trying to come up with, if we're gonna be transparent, how do we let the community know what our issues are, what we're trying to work on, maybe have staff working on, because the community certainly understands, we're getting the phone calls, if you use homelessness as an example, with all the encampments, and when you wanna talk about environmental and whatnot, with all the feces, and with all of the food, and just all of the unsanitary pieces going on in some of these places, people are very concerned. They don't know that we're, what we're doing, or how we're doing it, or anything, if we never communicate.
And that's, I'm kind of jumping off that, I'm a little surprised that we don't have what we saw as a umbrella for all is education and outreach, so there is nothing in that guiding principle that says that we should have open, clear communication with education. I know outreach is a tactic, but that kind of lends to what we were talking about yesterday, is educating our public on what we do and don't do, what core services we have and what we're not focused on.
Great guidance. Are you okay with us taking all that you've given us and coming back to with a recast of the guiding principles with the input that you've suggested, with a little bit of description after the two to three-word kind of phrases, and then you can react to that? Are you comfortable with that?
Could I also, maybe this is like throwing a wrench in it, but having some kind of thought to two-way communication, because it's not, it shouldn't be a us versus you, or it should be an open dialogue as far as what do you need and how can we help, and we will, that lends to the communication as far as, well, this is how far we can help.
Yep.
Right.
Dialogue's an excellent word.
Yeah, I like that word a lot. It's a good one.
This is great.
Okay. Alright, so we will take your thoughts and feedback, and we'll put some more wordsmithing behind these. And so with that, we'll move on to the strategic priorities or pillars that you came up with yesterday. You've got preparedness and resilience, proactive public safety, a shared sense of community, quality of life, and infrastructure.
Stamp it okay and move on.
Yep. Bruce is ready to go. Obie's nodding, and we'll go into some statements behind these on the following slides, kind of those defining statements. Alright. Rich, yes. Dave, yeah? Alright, so what we did last night, we took all the thoughts and feedback and kind of the raw data document from all of your conversations and put together goal statements that are really kind of what define that pillar or that priority, so that if people are like, what the heck do they mean, preparedness and resilience, this kind of gives you an understanding. So we'll read this out loud, and I'll go one at a time, get some feedback, comments. Preparedness and resilience. Build a system of intentional support for residents and businesses that mitigates risks...
Of course.
Stealing my thunder. That mitigates risks and proactively seeks out ways to ensure the community not only endures, but thrives. As you react to that and then think through, yep, Sarah?
There's one thing that's missing that I think we need to add in here. I would say, build a system of intentional support for residents, comma, businesses, and the environment that mitigates risks and proactively seeks out blah, blah, blah.
That's great. Anything else from anyone? Yep, Rich, that's good. Alright. Proactive public safety. Reimagine public safety. To emphasize both prevention and enforcement, engage the community through education and outreach, and provide the resources necessary to ensure safety throughout Westminster.
I don't like the word reimagine.
I don't like reimagine.
Got a bad rap.
Can we say like, to engage?
We're not RPD.
Ouch. No, I'm right with you, Nancy. Like, something like engage, like re-engage?
Or like, direct public safety toward? I don't know.
What about just provide?
I like that better.
Yeah, just provide?
That emphasizes, yeah.
Provide A.
I liked reimagine, because it gives us the flexibility to break out of a straitjacketed view of how to provide police and fire.
Well, if you're gonna have reimagine, you need to define it, and you need to have clear objectives on what you're redefining.
Okay.
There is a, there is a great deal, there's a great body of work out there that is reimagining in the negative, and it's drawn on negative connotation over the last year and a half.
And it started with defund the police, and then they changed it to, oh, well, we don't wanna defund the police, we wanna reimagine the police. So I'm a hard no.
Two years ago, would've been great work.
So do you like the idea? Let me read the definition of reimagine, maybe there's some words in here we can use.
Can we, we say something like, build on, build our public safety, or some way to sort of add, some connotation of adding to...
What about support public safety?
Well, I'm saying like more adding to what they do, because that's what essentially we're doing, is kind of adding another layer. Did we have like co-responding kind of referenced in there?
That's in the objectives. That's...
That's like prevention. Engage...
You could simply say provide. Reimagine is defined as to imagine a new, to form a new conception of, to recreate.
I don't know if it's just engaging with the community, it's more like working with more understanding with the community. I mean, yes, engaging is good, but bringing more...
This year, they were intentional in going to outreach to meet people, they met in different parks, they plan on, I think, doing it again this year, and it was to meet people in non-emergency ways, letting kids see the dogs and meet them, and just have that conversation, and nothing, nothing there that is anything but welcoming and answering questions.
Right, I feel like it was kind of focused on building trust, right?
It was total community outreach.
So...
To provide an emphasis on public safety with an emphasis on both prevention and enforcement, and then...
Building trust through engagement with the community and...
Yeah, we could leave all of that in there, too, but to replace, we can't just take out reimagine and put in provide.
What about enhance? Because that implies you're already...
Deliver, we could say, really, deliver public safety.
Deliver public safety with an emphasis on prevention and enforcement, dah, 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 dah.
Well, I think, I think somewhere acknowledging we wanna build trust, and not just have education and outreach, but to build a better, almost back to the dialogue thing and the principles.
Is it the word engage, Sarah, that's throwing you off?
I don't mind engaging, clearly, you know, engaging is good, but like building trust with the community through education and outreach, maybe that's what it is.
What about, what about, either deliver or provide public safety to emphasize both prevention and enforcement, and build trust by engaging the community through education and outreach, and provide the resources necessary to ensure safety throughout Westminster?
But as Mr. Baker says all the time, it's our actions that build trust, so these actions will build it, we shouldn't...
Trust is the outcome.
Yeah.
Can we take out those words, the three words, and just start with prioritize, prevention and enforcement, and the rest of it? I don't think you need to even say, I mean, it's repeating the title anyway. So if we just start with prioritize the prevention and enforcement, prioritize prevention and enforcement...
What does that mean?
By engaging the community through education and outreach, yada, yada.
Well, I think, I wouldn't say by engaging the community necessarily, because they're separate thoughts.
Okay.
Yeah, prevention and enforcement is a separate thought than engaging the community.
I like the word enhance, and the reason I like enhance is because it gives the idea that we want to improve areas where we have problems, and every department does. I think that the national narrative has done damage in departments that did not have before the level of problems that we see now, and that has been largely due by, I would say, media pressure, political pressure, things that have been changed at the State House in Colorado specifically for us. So I like the idea of giving the flexibility of a word like enhance that shows we are have, we have people who are doing good work, and we have always room to improve. And even if we had the perfect police department, my professional life says you always set a standard of improvement is something that you want, whether you got the best employee or not.
I like the word enhance, too. But I think one thing missing here, too, is the word health, because public safety is not just the police, not just fire, but also the utilities. So if we say something like, enhance the prevention and enforcement, enhance the health and safety of our community, engage the community, I do like the trust thing, too. I don't know, how do we even, the trust piece?
I think we deal with that in our infrastructure, provide safe, you know, to all of our essential services. This is very much a pillar about safety of our residents and their neighborhoods.
We put utilities in this bucket yesterday.
Yeah, weren't we, oh, we did.
Yeah.
Utilities ended up in two places. It ended up in infrastructure and it ended up in public safety. And there wasn't, we didn't talk about yesterday, you know, which place do you prefer for it to be and does it need to be in both places? So that's not a conversation we had yesterday, but it did show up in both.
I don't, I think the utility should probably be in the other bucket, but I think that Obie has a good point about health, because it's also fire and EMS. So, I mean, there's a component of health in it. But, I mean, it's just not that, like, safe drinking water kind of health. It's more the, the services that public safety provide as far as medical response.
It's very easy to add, it's very easy to say enhance public safety and health to emphasize both prevention and enforcement, engage the community through education and outreach, and provide resources necessary to ensure safety throughout Westminster.
That's fine, except I thought we swapped out enhance for emphasize.
I'm sorry, enhance, yes, I wrote that down. I misspoke.
I'd buy that.
We could also add the health necessary to ensure safety and public health throughout Westminster, so it could go in either at the beginning or at the end.
And it's like mental health though, or...
Or just health, because then it's all encompassing.
So reimagine public safety?
Holistic health.
Sorry.
No, we're not gonna use reimagine, I don't think.
I almost said it, Lindsay. And then I was like, hold back, Sarah, hold back. Well, now I'm lost at what it was. So enhance public safety and health. Wait, what?
There's a missing two, to emphasize both prevention and enforcement. I mean, you put health in there, it doesn't emphasize enforcement, so I get, I get it.
I think, one thing we just need to, I think, acknowledge or bring forward, at least in the objectives, is that building trust piece, because that was why we went out to the community over the past years, talking to folks. And the whole point was like, community members didn't feel like they knew what was going on, a lot of them didn't feel like they could trust the police. And I think we still have that. And I, and I think just being out there more and being intentional about our engagement efforts has helped, I hope. But to continue to do that over the next few years.
So perhaps, with this feedback, do you want, I think we have one almost crafted, but maybe try and incorporate...
So to jump on the health and the mental health part of it, I mean, what if we put to, at the very end, to ensure safety and wellbeing throughout Westminster?
Oh, that's a good suggestion.
Okay.
Yeah. And then Michelle and I will see if we can incorporate that aspect of trust, Sarah, somewhere in there. Are we comfortable moving on to the next one?
Look, you're gonna see this. Yeah, and I'm, I'm still stuck on trust because I somewhat agree with Bruce. If this is done properly, we will see the results, especially in the next survey.
Well, to Sarah's point too, I think you should be thoughtful in the objectives that you create to go along with this particular strategic priority, well, for all of them, but you could craft some objectives that are specifically designed to increase trust.
And the only thing I'd like to say, because I don't want to change anything we've done, but the major player in public safety is the public. Police and fire do not provide public safety. They basically assist the public. But that doesn't have to be in the thing, but that's certainly the way I view it.
I agree. We have to remind people, they're in control. Nobody's doing this for them. Yes, when you have a 911 call or you have a traffic accident, people are there to help. But we have to tell and educate our citizens, this is their responsibility. We can educate them to, how many times do you hear with these cars being stolen, the car was open? You can watch video after video on next door where they're checking door handles. You can go over here to the other side of the promenade. And they go row to row. Just walk your animals over there, you watch it every day. They're looking for the people that didn't take responsibility. They leave, "Oh, I left my purse in there. I didn't think anybody..." Come on, use your head and be responsible for what you do. Do not blame the police.
All right, I think we've got enough to move on to the next one. So shared sense of community. Either foster or cultivate equitable opportunities that help residents feel at home and connected in their community and empowered to live their best lives. Chris likes it. Other thoughts? Sarah's on the fence.
I know, you know, for me, it was like, some of these have so much crossover that it's really gonna come down to the objectives that we list under them.
Yeah, absolutely.
In this particular one, we were trying to weave together the idea that you want people to feel that sense of unity, you want them to feel that this is their home, you want them to be able to be empowered within their community. So this one was a little bit more fuzzy, but we were trying to make it a little more concrete. You want to leave it for now and see what kinds of objectives you can come up with, as Sarah said? Is that okay? I don't see a lot of reaction to this one.
No, I'm thinking, we're thinking.
Okay, we'll give you a couple minutes to think.
I like it.
Yeah, especially if you look at the objectives that are listed now, and I'm sure we'll come up with some other ones, it's, this is one of those hard esoteric things, what, what makes you feel part of something? But it's a big part of what our residents like.
Yes, and I do think you can come up with concrete objectives below it.
All right. We will move on to quality of life. Ensure that Westminster offers a diverse range of amenities and activities for residents, businesses, and visitors that honor the city's heritage and support parks, recreation, open spaces, and the arts.
Bruce's thumbs up.
My two first reactions, I always look at Bruce and then at Sarah, to see what their reactions are gonna be.
Everyone else is kind of rolling along and those two are like, please.
I think, I think we have to, I think we have to add libraries in there, because it is part of the mix.
Yeah, that was brought up yesterday. Sorry, we missed that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Plus being the liaison to that board all here.
Keep yourself out of hot water.
Well, they merge, so we should.
I think, I would rather say cities, history versus heritage, only because, you know, there was history here before, you know, I'm just thinking of like, the Uplands history, you guys remember the, the history report that was provided as part of that? It went far back in time. And I think that we have a lot of history that happened before the city was settled. And even actually, some of the, there was, anyway, I, I think that would be more inclusive to say history?
Thumbs up.
All right.
I'm agnostic, what, either way it's fine.
You know that Dave, you have a really strong opinion.
Can I quote you on that?
I, I will look up...
I'll let you know if I don't.
I'll look up heritage versus history and then maybe make it more informed, because that's just me going off of my instinct or so.
Heritage means you have to follow and keep, and keep doing it, where basically history, you can even have bad history and you're not gonna continue doing it.
Right, like, that's kind of where, yeah. Okay.
Okay, so we will...
I have a, sorry.
Yeah, of course.
This is stupid and I'm, I'm, it's word smithing, it's word emmencing here.
Hey, you can't say that unless your last name is Emmens.
My apologies. Can we move the word arts up to the front?
Yeah, of course.
There's just, there's a large creative class in Westminster, and they just want more recognition. So I think if we move it up, it's a small change that...
Yeah, definitely.
Absolutely. And to, to your, the points made, Bruce and Sarah, I looked up the definition of history, and here's some definitions. A chronological record of significant events, often including an explanation of their causes, an established record, events that form the subject matter of a history, a branch of knowledge that records and explains past events.
I think that's why we didn't put history in there.
Well, let me read you what heritage is. Something that is handed down from the past as a tradition, a national heritage of honor, pride, and courage, something that comes or belongs to one by reason of birth, an inherited lot or portion, a heritage of poverty and suffering, something reserved for one, the heritage of the righteous. I'd probably go with history.
History's probably better, given that definition.
All right, history it is. Infrastructure. Provide safe and equitable access to essential services, and we'll change that, given the conversation this morning, to core services. And amenities by safeguarding, maintaining, and improving the city's water, wastewater, transportation, and transit systems. We have an extra and sitting in there.
Do we use the and, the comma before the and?
No, you shouldn't use it.
I really like using it. I have never left it.
You like that Oxford comma?
Yeah, do you use the Oxford comma, or do you not?
We're not gonna go off the rails now.
I usually love the Oxford comma, and I can't stand the Oxford comma. The heart's switch over for me.
What? How can you not like that?
I know. Don't throw me out of the room.
We will let you choose whether or not you want to use the Oxford comma.
We will scrub the document either way.
Now we'll report back on that one.
Your phone's about to blow up with comments.
Executive server, don't we?
Well, and now we're at the end of this section, I'd like to bring forward something that, as I looked back last night, I went, whoa, that's missing, okay? One of my goals is to have a smaller city government. When I was on council a while back, we ran the city just fine with between 900 and 940 people. And today, we have 1,072 and we want to go to 1,092. I think we should be down by 800 or not really 900 or less.
Is that, and Jody, you probably have to answer this, are those all filled positions currently? Are those FTEs that are just approved?
Not all, sorry, not all filled. We have, we have quite a, quite a number of vacant and unfilled positions of the total, of the total authorized FTE count.
And I, I think that the idea of the smaller government, obviously, I'm favorable to, but just saying I want a smaller government because I want a smaller government, like, that's too, too broad for me. Like, we would need to see, like, what it's, what we're recommending being cut, why we're recommending it being cut, or why it was there in the first place. I certainly agree that there's been some growth that has happened disproportionately in certain areas, especially top level of the organization that I'm concerned about. But if there are things like, you know, if some of those, those hires are things like mitigating fire risk in, in our waterways and stuff like that, like, then that might be a reason why you would have added something or a position. So I'd like to have a bigger discussion about it, so, but I mean, just a broad goal of saying, "I'm gonna shrink government," that's, I mean, to what point? Like, I think this gets more into what a resilient and efficient government is versus just putting a qualifier, like, smaller, or, but I mean, I think you have a qualifier because you know what it was when you were here before. But you know what I mean? Like, I'm totally open to the conversation, and I think that we should have, have that as a, a part of our overall objectives and goals. I just don't, I don't know how you fit that in, in the way you just presented it, I guess.
I agree with that. You know, I think that the only goal of doing that would be to become more resilient, and that's already captured as a goal.
Which I think we should, that's the area where I was focusing on, because if we do, if we're able to agree to put thrift in our guiding principles, then we have to take that and move that down. Resilience, in my mind, would be the biggest reason for that. So I think when we get to objectives, we should add that on the top line.
Well, and your point about the, Bruce's addition of thrift, which you all agreed with, and that, that gives you as the council the opportunity, it's a guiding principle for you, so you could give a directive to, to Jody to say, "We want you to evaluate the, the positions in each department." You, you could give him an assignment and a directive based on that principle of thrift to look at city government's staffing and its capacity and what is needed versus what is not needed. And that way, you know, you're, you're, you're allowing that analysis to be done, you're allowing him to come back faithfully with what Dave said.
And I, and I think this is good, and I know that the mayor has an example she shared with me on her time before, when they went through the Great Recession. And I don't remember exactly what the positions were, but I know it had something to do with, and you, so you could share, I mean, as far as people would, when they were paying their water bills, they would, we would act as a bank. And so we would have people running back and forth to get cash, because people would write their check for over, because it was convenient and it was something nice that the city did for them. But then, when they went through that process during the Great Recession, it made, if you have a full-time person that's just making the city act as a bank, that's a place where there's efficiency. So to me, I like something like that, that allows us to then give that directive and say, you know, "Let's go department by department and have those departments make recommendations through the city manager and say, 'Here's where we have efficiencies.'" Or even they give reallocation, like, if they have problems in one area, they're, this is something I do in my professional life, if there's a need my department has, and before I ever go ask for money from, you know, my boss, we'll look at what we're doing internally, see if we can carve the money out that we need, and then, then I'll propose it to my boss, like, "Hey, we want to do this new thing, but I've already found the money and paid for it." So I think that that, there should be some room in an organization where that's a consistent ongoing practice because, for efficiency. So you don't just get tied up in, "Well, we've always just done it this way."
Right. We went through, and it was exhaustive, but why was that person there? You had their job description, then you interviewed and said, "What do you do?" And down in the water, they were doing, a fourth of their time was banking, and that is not in their job description, nor was it something that, it, it causes other things. It meant that we had too much cash on hand, it became a safety issue if somebody wanted to rob the, down there, it became all sorts of things. We looked for crossover of duplication, and that's where we came up with 72 positions that did not need to be filled. And we did give a year, we started that in the half a year, and then went into the next year and gave people till the 31st that we knew were going to not have jobs. And worked very feverishly to find them jobs in other places, and in some cases, they didn't fit so well here anyway, that we found them great fits in whole different careers. So it was done justly versus when, in the middle of a budget year, because we've had two-year budget years, and in the middle of it, one year, city manager added $1.9 million for 13 positions. Just happened and blows my mind, and I think that needs to be looked at. A question has been raised at council, how many communication people do we have? I still haven't seen that answer. I may have missed an email this week where it has that, but I just, the public sees it, we get asked the questions, we have to have better answers for why we have who we have.
And I also think there are three powerful reasons. Not, I couldn't figure out a goal either to put in, but there are three powerful Not, I couldn't figure out a goal either to put in, but there are three powerful reasons. One, it gives everyone in the organization a heads up, and we owe everybody that. Number two, part of the staffing we have is because of who we had before as the king of Westminster. And you got to give the king a little latitude. And the last council gave him that without much challenge or question, okay? And then number three is, we had a different vision statement and mission statement and all that. We all remember when the council directed that we were going to be the next urban center of the Front Range. We're not going to do that anymore. And I think that has a direct impact on the manpower we're using to accomplish tasks, which we don't have anymore.
Well, I would just be cautionary about how we approach this direction to, to staff. I mean, when, several years ago, actually, when Bruce, you were on council, one of the improvements that I know the city has been staffing up on is like stormwater management. We had one person doing it and it's, we were behind in our certifications and, and we weren't meeting minimum requirements. And so we've built that team up, for example. And so, yes, there were things where we, you know, as a city, we grew exponentially, but there were some functions where we just, we didn't grow in. And so the city had to build up staff in that. I think one other element that we should just be cautious of is, you know, when, when we have this desire to have enhanced outreach and communication and transparency, that does take, I mean, Lindsay, you're in this.
Oh, you're saying I'm biased to it?
Right. It takes people.
You can't say you want more communication without communication.
Yeah, yeah. So that, yeah, I mean, and I don't, you know, Nancy, regard, you know, I wasn't here with the recession in terms of what process everybody went through. I know there was a lot of evaluation of the open positions and whether or not, you know, we needed to keep them open. I know there've been several, a lot of positions that haven't been able to fill that are essential for our services that we really do need to fill, that weren't able to be filled during the pandemic. So there is some catch-up to be done. And I just, you know, in terms of time and efficiency, where are we having our directors and our staff focusing? What are, what are our priorities right now? And not to say that I don't agree that we should have an efficiently run government. There could be, maybe there's something that's built in a little bit over time versus everybody drop your pencils and focus in on this, that we give them some direction on what our priorities are, and this may not be the top priority.
I think Jody's already done a great job with some of the positions that he's filled. He has, I don't, combined, so we're down two positions at the moment with what he... So I think it's in his mind, he knows it, he's heard us. So I just think nothing's going to happen tomorrow. But for him, because he's the only one that answers to us, he needs to hear our conversations so he understands what our thoughts are.
May I add to that, Mayor? You know, the, the higher level, the goal, I think the more powerful it will be in term, and, and the less prescriptive. What the mayor's referring to is, you know, in the last 90 days, that we've made, they're interim adjustments because I'm interim, but we've made probably close to a million dollars in leadership and city manager office salary reductions on the, on an annual equivalent. Two department heads, a deputy city manager, an assistant to the mayor. And there, and I'll be preparing that information for you in our, in our monthly personnel report. But that was based on a very high-level understanding that I have of the, you know, of the direction for this, for this city. And, and so the higher the level of this goal, the, the more powerful it will be for us. And we could, for example, bring back in study session, we could benchmark against other municipal, other full-service cities, what their FTE counts are. And Councilor Baker and others can have a look at the data and we can, and we can see where we stand in the pack. I don't think we've, we've presented it that way for council before and it would, and we could also benchmark certain areas like police, for example, and see how we compare to other communities. So I, I would advise, if, if it's a, if it's set as a high-level goal, we will, as we have for the last 90 days, we will keep acting on that as a matter of priority. And then we can follow up with, with more detailed work with council on the data.
And I think that, like, what I'd like to see is, what I've heard here is, I mean, basically that it is a high-level priority in a way that gives flexibility. And I think if you already look at what we've put, such as well-staffed and trained police and fire, we're kind of giving some of that direction. And so I guess whatever other direction we need to give that gives the city manager the charge, but also the flexibility to do it in a, in a best-practice manner. So we're looking at the position by position because you have a good point. If it's a position that hurts the quality or safety of water, we need to fill those as soon as possible. If it's, you know, getting more police on the street, when we've said we want to, you know, increase public safety and decrease crime, we need to look at tho- those staffing levels. So I think, you know, however we need to put it in there, that it does, you know, what Jody just asked, I think makes sense to me. Especially if we're giving some time and flexibility. So it's not like tomorrow, we're going to, you know, get rid of 100 people. It's more, we're going to, with some sort of plan that you come up with, go after and, and make more efficiencies throughout the organization.
So you're...
Sorry.
Go ahead, Obie.
So just to third on that, I think high level here would be best. I've, I've, I've managed big departments, small departments, whole companies. And Rich can, can second this too, from a FTE management standpoint. If you want to give direction to staff, it's best to actually use ratios, right? So, so it's not about the number of FTEs, it's not about the total dollars, it's about the cost per FTE, right? So typically you would set a metric. So I think we could do that here and set a metric of cost per FTE that Jody can take as a guiding principle almost, and use that to benchmark against other cities too, right? It's, if Araveta has 100 people in their communications department and we have five, that doesn't actually tell you anything unless you look at the cost per FTE. Take the total cost, divide that by the FTEs. That's how you get the benchmark to measure yourself again. So I'd be in favor of actually setting a metric there.
I was just going to offer, your strategic plan will also drive the staffing. Where the staff need to be allocated, how much capacity you need to be successful in making progress on what you've identified as your strategic priorities and objectives. So the completed plan is highly informative to whatever process you want Jody to go through to look at staffing. And in fact, just to provide, provide a little bit more perspective, post, strategic planning was interestingly different. Not the methodology that's used, but the way governments are thinking about it. Now that we've been into the pandemic, there's a whole different thought process going on in, in city and county governments about the meaning of a strategic plan. And one of the things that we have seen written into the requests for proposal that we are responding to as a consulting firm that provides these services is the city council and the city manager intend to use the strategic plan to make decisions about organizational structure and staffing. So I think it's important to note, yes, you need to look at the efficiency of your operations and understand staffing just from the standpoint, how do we benchmark against other cities? But your strategic plan is also a driver for how you're going to staff and where you're going to put those staff.
I think that's all good information, but I mean, I think also we need to be cautious when we benchmark against other cities. Most glaring example is when we do that with water. And like for many presentations, it's just like, okay, this is where we rate. But then over the last 12 months, when actually a resident who took time, this resident must have probably taken a couple full days of work to hunt down the information she provided me. But if you look at Arvada, for example, they're 30,000 gallons in their first tier. And that's no comparison when, you know, all of their tiers, all of our tiers fit in their first tier. So, I mean, we want the, the solution, I mean, it's good to look at what our partners are doing, but we want the solution that's the Westminster solution. You know, understanding that there are some best-practice learnings that we can do. But I think our goal has to drive our stuff and how it fits our city.
And being part of the communication education on that is comparing to other cities is, you can't com- you cannot compare cities that are not full service to Westminster. I mean, Arvada, they, Fire Department is separate, they have their own fire board. Apex Park and Rec is separate on that. And plus, they drive their own mill levies off of that too. So completely, completely different.
They may have completely different strategic priorities than you. So benchmarking is helpful, it gives you some in- in- information. It's, it's a data point, it's not the entire thing.
And I just think right now, because we do have so many openings, is a time to reflect at least on those openings to see, instead of getting full and then having to let somebody go or wait until somebody leaves, that's craziness. So now's the time to be proactive, not late after.
Yeah, and/or if you had talked about what you guys had done in the past and helped people to their next position, potentially you might have people that are in a position that you don't think we want to keep, but there's openings in other areas that you do want to keep them. Maybe there's an opportunity for them to lateral into a different position. So you're not, you're just potentially giving them opportunity. And I, I know in the private sector they do that. When EAS got bought by Abbott, the people that were getting laid off, we all had opportunity across their worldwide organization to get, you know, to be first, first pick for jobs.
And it's also something with, like staffing and workload analyses, it can also drive business process improvement as well. So you, you're looking at your staffing and workload and aligning it with your strategic plan. But there may also be some vacancies that, hey, if your staff may bring to you and say, if we can change this process or figure out how to use this application or interface, these systems or whatever have you, that's going to save us time that maybe we wouldn't need to fill a vacant position. So there's some business process discussion kind of built into that work too. Yep, all right. I think this is a good place. We've kind of been talking about one big objective that the team would like to set, to move on to talking specifically about... Yes, yes, we're definitely going to do a break. We're going to be talking about setting those objectives.
Did we finish the infrastructure? I feel like we kind of pivoted with Bruce bringing up the...
Good point. Good point, Lindsay.
I don't know.
Did we finish it?
I don't feel comfortable with it.
Was it the Oxford comma missing?
The Oxford comma is what threw us off.
I mean, can we, I mean, transit, transportation, transit systems are clearly defined to people. And so, you know, what does that look like? Are we looking at transportation, I hate to say this, holistically?
Can't help yourself now, can you?
I mean, is it public transportation? Is it transportation as in like, ride-share services? Like, is that something that we would focus on? You know, are we defining that? And then transit system to me, just with a transit hat on, is buses and road, or buses and rail, which transit systems should ultimately be your roadways. And so that's where I feel like maybe we should define or change transit to roadway systems.
I, I agree because this makes us in charge of our transit systems, which we have no sway over.
I agree, but I didn't want to start another fight, so.
Another discussion. You didn't want to start another discussion. All right, so you want to change this transit systems to roadways?
Roadway systems? Would you guys, so that transportation is more in line with how we now refer to it as mobility? Because mobility is like everything, the bucket of transit, of scooters or whatever the heck. You know, it's, it's all the things, pedestrians, bikes, all that. So how we get around?
Well, that's through roadway, safe sidewalks, roadways, and bridges. I mean, we, we provide the underpinning for how all these things get around, but we don't do the transit or transportation systems themselves.
Well, the, what the industry is moving towards is a more, like, a broader umbrella of mobility because mobility is walking and biking and it, it's, it's the act of transportation and that it's, it includes all of these elements. And it's not just potentially limited to the roadways themselves. It could be us, you know, trying to still advocate for getting transit in the, you know, it doesn't have to be, and maybe it's about some of the wording before, that it's specific to us, of course it flies, it comes off. Specific to us maintaining and improving, you know, having the control over it. But maybe it's also advocating or accommodating or, or working towards a wide range of mobility options in the city. So it's, I think that's, that problem is the qualifying that we're owning, maintaining, and improving it ourselves.
And in some cases, I see those options under quality of life. As far as the, the, I'm looking at, to me, concrete, not in the sense of concrete, the substance, but what, what do we, what do we, what does the city provide for people to do those things? But I don't like the word mobility because it starts bringing in other avenues that are secondary or tertiary in a car-driven society. And, and that's, you know, you can then, but if you have good roads and you want to put a bike lane on there, if, if it's, if it's warranted and then safe and doesn't constrict cars, then I'm okay with that. But, but mobility has been used as a term to decrease the travel, the, the access by even cars themselves. And that is our primary transportation mode.
But we do have areas in the city where we do have more walkable and, you know, non-car priority areas, like, you know, the downtown area, any of our transit areas where we want to emphasize people taking transit versus...
Right, cars. And then, and then we provide excellent sidewalks, we, you know, we, we have the infrastructure. And so that's why I want to keep infrastructure, infrastructure.
What do we call our plan?
I also like roadways too.
What do we call our transportation and mobility plan? Is that what we call it?
The, yes, the recent, the recently adopted plan is the transportation and mobility plan. And one of the elements was, that was really important to the community that we addressed over the last number of years were connections across the roadways to the trail systems and such. And, and those were included in that. And that was actually one of the drivers for that plan being overhauled was, was how our connections happened. And so those were crossing roadways or connecting to roadways, but doing in a way that was focused on our trail systems, our, and those, those sorts of elements of the, of the transportation system. So the, the question may be the definition, right, of roadways. And maybe making sure, if that's, if that's the word that council selects, that it, that it's comprehensive enough to include pedestrian improvements. For example, we did a reconstruction of an intersection that actually narrowed the intersection for, by taking one to two lanes that were unused capacity and converting it to, you know, extending the sidewalks out. It actually improved the performance of the intersection for the cars because the pedestrians weren't taking as long to cross the street. So the cycle was shortened for the pedestrian crossings. So we'd want to make sure, for example, that the word doesn't exclude those kinds of mobility improvements.
Well, and roadways would do that because that gives you sidewalks, gutters, whatever the format of that transportation part of it is. And then the interconnectivity, I, you know, I have no, no problems with doing that. And then the safety crossings at Sheridan for the bike trail and the, you know, I have, I don't want to minimize that because I use those. I put in over 1,000 miles on our trails on a bike last year. So I know all of our interconnections. So, and I understand those safety issues of that too. But to me, that's not the infrastructure per se. We could put roadways and then whatever type of comma or "and" that you want to argue about. But then, you know, but I think roadways is critical.
Well, I agree, but I don't want to, and I don't know if it just doesn't fit in this bucket. And I think as far as transportation and transit systems, it's an "and" or "as well" statement that should be working with our, our partners in those areas because that's really what, it should be a goal that we, especially with, to what our extent anybody could ever hold RTD accountable. could ever hold RTD accountable for the money they've taken for us, from us for decades. But I mean, we can't lose sight of that being a goal and throw our hands up at it, in my mind, but it doesn't fit here. And it needs to be spelled out that it's a, those are partnerships, that's not ownership.
Well, we could, since that's a guiding principle, though, we could put that in our objectives as far as roadways and transit partners, but-
Yeah, that's fine with me, too.
Well, the transportation piece, how it's written is equal, equitable access to, and so, they're responsible, RTD is responsible for where they put a blessed-up flag. They're not responsible to the access to it, right? So, that is where we come in as a city and say, here's equal access to that transportation. And so, while maybe we take out that transportation piece, but I would like to see roadway systems-
I, I still feel like mobility, I mean, it's like, it just describes all of our ability to drive, to utilize, you know, maybe carpools or shuttles, or my mom doesn't drive, so what does she have to take, you know? All the ways we get around, and it's acknowledging that it's not just cars, it is us walking, it is us biking. So, I mean, if we could say like, the city's water, wastewater, mobility, comma, and roadway systems, where mobility is defined as our just moving around the city, in whatever way we do.
Works for me, or we have a small group with the transportation and the planner, and you guys go bring us back some work product.
I, I'm okay with that, as long as we, you know, I, I'm fine with that.
So, say it, say it again?
It's basically taking out and transportation and replacing it with mobility, because it's our ability to get around the city no matter what we use.
So, mobility and roadway systems?
Yes, that's what I have written down.
That's encompassing enough.
All right, thank you.
Thumbs up.
All right, we did it.
Time for a break.
All five goal statements are done. Yay!
Wait, I thought there were six.
Five. Don't go there, Dave, don't go there.
What are we going to do with this?
Let's take a, yeah, like a 10-minute break.
Yeah. I love new ones.
Thank you.
Thumbs up.
All right, we did it.
Time for a break.
All five goal statements are done. Yay!
Wait, I thought there were six.
Five.
Don't go there, Dave, don't go there.
What are we going to do with this?
Let's take a, yeah, like a 10-minute break.
Bless you.
I love new ones.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. We did it.
Time for a break.
All five goal statements are done. Yay!
Wait, I thought there were six.
Five.
Don't go there, Dave, don't go there.
What are we going to do with this?
Throw us out for analysis.
Let's take a, yeah, like a 10-minute break.
Bless you.
I love new ones.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thumbs up.
All right, we did it.
Time for a break.
All five goal statements are done. Yay!
Wait, I thought there were six.
Five.
Don't go there, Dave, don't go there.
What are we going to do with this?
Throw us out for analysis.
Let's take a, yeah, like a 10-minute break.
Bless you.
I love new ones.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thumbs up.
All right, we did it.
Time for a break.
All five goal statements are done. Yay!
Wait, I thought there were six.
Five.
Don't go there, Dave, don't go there.
What are we going to do with this?
Throw us out for analysis.
Let's take a, yeah, like a 10-minute break.
Bless you.
I love new ones.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. 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 Thank you.
Is that good? Thank you.
Yeah.
I just, by way of transition after the break, I wanted to get some information back to you on some of the earlier discussion around FTE. We do have 1,092 authorized FTE total, and we currently have 155 vacant FTE.
Thank you, Jody.
Sorry, some areas harder hit than others. PD, as we know, comprise an unfortunate portion of that, but that is fairly widespread even here at this facility. We do not have enough lifeguards and they're, you know, so they're not able to provide full capacity in the pool area today, for example, but that's the case every weekend. So we're working through that, but...
Yeah, I saw Groomfield had put something on their social media that they actually are having closures because of lifeguard issues. So it seems, they called it a national problem, but...
We need to get some of our swim club members interested in a summer job and year round here.
Oh, I see. Yep, right here. Nope, that's okay. Thanks, Cody. Okay. We are now going to focus on objectives. And I would turn you, so last night when Shannon and I were working to create what we needed for today, I forgot to include a slide on how to put together objectives. But if you go to slide 53 in your packet, the guidance is there. So those goal statements that we just spent time working on, those are your longer-term sort of North Star that you're moving towards for each of your strategic priorities. The objectives should be short-term. So they should be one to two years. So very focused because you guys, at least up to this point, have been updating your strategic plan annually. So you want those objectives to be shorter-term to provide the focus and direction that Jody needs for his team. So it will guide their activities over the short-term. And so that's where we want you to be as you get into your small group discussions and you think about what are the objectives that we want in order to make progress towards that strategic goal and that strategic priority. We've already given you a starting point because yesterday, this is all the stuff you brainstormed. And I think this is great raw material to begin thinking about and coming up with objectives. So the way we're going to do this, so that we don't get bogged down, is we're going to assign, you're going to break into two groups, and we're going to assign each group two strategic goals. And then we're going to have both groups work on one. And the one that we're going to have you both work on is the one that's the smushiest and the hardest to kind of wrap your brain around. It's the one that you said, Rich, the one about the shared sense of community. That's kind of a, yeah, the touchy-feeling one.
Very technical.
So, um...
It was hard, I vote.
So why don't this time, just so we make sure that we are broken up again. Go ahead, Sarah.
Should we, what I would suggest, we look at the existing strategic plan objectives and just as inspiration? Because otherwise, you know, instead of just starting with a clean slate, like we don't have some good direction.
I think you can use both. I think you can use this and the existing strategic plan as raw material to build objectives.
Okay.
Yeah. And the existing strategic plan is in your binder. I think what we'll do is just number off, one, two, one, two. That way it'll make it random. And then we'll assign goals to the group. And, oh, we won't be able to see all the goals at the same time.
We have it in our...
Okay, they're there. Okay. All right. So Dave, one. Sarah, two.
One.
One?
One.
Okay. Ones are going to take the first two, which would be resiliency and preparedness. And what was the second one? Proactive publics. So ones are going to take resiliency and preparedness and proactive public safety. Twos are going to take quality of life and infrastructure. And both groups are going to work on shared sense of community. Okay?
Do, are we switching off? Because I would like to work on all of them.
We think we'll be here all day if we have, we think we'll be here all day if every group is going to do objectives for all five.
There are some that I would feel remiss if I did not involve myself in.
All right. How do folks feel about just having each group work on all five goals? We were concerned about how long that would take.
I get it. I know.
I mean, we're still having, we're having a discussion. If we do that, we might have to say, okay, everybody work on all of them, but limit yourself to four objectives. And then we're not going to all come up with, both groups aren't going to come up with the same. And then when we come back together, we could add eight, 10, or mix and spits. Yeah, this, yeah, I'm concerned.
So I would offer, if you all, this is your process. So we'll accommodate what you want. We're just cognizant of the time.
I mean, some of the objectives have already been talked about, right? Because that's kind of what's listed as bullet points that we talked about yesterday as a group. So...
Just knowing how much you all, how deeply committed you are to the words in this document, making sure things are described properly, we were concerned that we wouldn't finish today. So happy to change it to you work on, each group works on all five goals. However, I would then take Rich's suggestion, which is limiting the number of objectives you're going to be able to come up with. Because otherwise, if we don't, we could have, we could be sitting here as a large group trying to sort through 16 objectives for a particular goal, and we will never finish today. So...
So honestly, I think the, even if we did it the first way, we would all come back and do the readout.
Absolutely.
And we would still, though, it would still take a while if we hadn't seen what the other group is coming. So our second one, Sarah's saying, yeah, I think we actually all need to work on all of it.
Okay.
I don't think the priority should be to leave sooner. It should be to get it done the right way.
I'm not even saying leaving sooner. We're going until 2:00 today. And given the amount of dialogue you all like to have and the detail of the objectives, that was our concern. We need to have you finished at 2:00.
And it's good to just have four that we can bring up because that forces us to put them in the hierarchy, to put them in a priority.
Well, and if each group comes up with four, then we're going to have eight. And then you can look at that. You might have some similar ones that you, we can integrate them, condense them. And you might say, ah, guess what? Something's missing here. So if we keep the number lower to start with, you can always add to it in your group work. So no, we were not saying, Shannon already said, we're more than likely going to be going until 2:00 today because of the level of dialogue you guys like to have. And we're scheduled to be here until 2:00. But you have an executive session, and I have to get on an airplane. So I can't stay much longer than 2:00.
Can I make another suggestion? So this is, this list of things that have been come up before. He's having side conversation. I have to ask Jody this, so...
Nope, Jody.
I'm sorry, we were talking about the exec session.
That's, that's fine. Just, you know, there's a list here of things that people came, brought up as priorities. And I know in the past, when we kind of had our list of things, which I, this is a big list, and obviously you couldn't do everything on here. But I imagine there are things on this list that you probably could already do or probably already working on to some level that don't necessarily have to land as like long-term objectives. So I'm just curious, has this list been gone through at some point to say things that we actually already are working on and/or are like easy things that don't really need to be on a big plan? Because they're just things that we could easily...
Dave, is that the list that we generated yesterday?
I don't know. It was just on my, my...
We haven't had time because that's the work generated yesterday. That list came out of yesterday's discussion. So, yeah.
Okay. I thought maybe this was the one that came out of election priorities. But either way, so long-term, I guess in the past, that's what they've done. So my, as long as the group's comfortable with this, I think that's another thing that Jody probably could look over this list and let us know are these things that really, that we could easily accommodate.
A third, a third option.
Yes. Happy to entertain it.
We, we worked hard yesterday, and we have more than enough things under each one. Even if we start out with, we, each of us can only pick four things, and let's go around and see what, who, what's our top thing and who, what gets the most votes under each piece. And then we start working on things.
My only concern, Nancy, with that is that that was a late afternoon brainstorm, and that might, that list might not be all encompassing of people's, because it, it was late in the afternoon thought process. You had just created your strategic priorities. You didn't have the benefit of the goal statements. If we were in a different place in our process, I would absolutely agree with that. I think we need some small group discussion. So let's do this. Let's take Sarah's suggestion. Let's, let's split into two small groups. You've got raw material to work with. But let's limit how many objectives you can come up with for each goal. Bring the two back together. See what we've got collectively in the large group discussion. And then we can look at that and say, is there anything missing? Is there anything critically important that, that we didn't come up with out of our two, two group discussions? Yes, Sarah?
Hey, before we break then, I would just add to the first preparedness and resilience piece that we should, because I wasn't sure where to add this, but continuing efforts towards sustainable environmental efforts to be in that first one. So I'm not, well, at least somewhere on one of, you know, on the, on the list. So if we could just mark it down, and you can figure out where best to put it.
Yes, I'm trying to think. Would it help if we each individually work on our own, pick three each, and then come back and talk about the three and see if there's overlap?
Part, part, I, I don't disagree that it's, I don't, yes, it would be helpful, I think, for you to have some of your own thoughts around that. However, part of what we're trying to do here is get this group to consensus on what it is you're going to have in there. And if there's too much individual going on, then it's harder to get to consensus. And we have three hours. So...
But if we split into two groups, then we won't know what the other group is thinking.
No, because we're going to have a, we're going to have a group session afterwards, right? Where you do your report out from your small group discussions, just like we've been doing the whole time. But there's something that's, that's not working for you about that. So help me understand what it is.
I just want all of us to look at all of it. But I, I know it's going to take a long time. But I, I want to know what everyone is thinking, too. I don't know if it's splitting out. Yeah, we, we'll get together. But it's not the same as when we have a small group, understanding the why behind people's thoughts, et cetera.
Even if the small groups are reporting out the why behind their thoughts, are you saying you'd rather?
That's fine. No, it's fine.
Are you saying you'd rather hear the collective thinking of the group as we've been doing today?
Yes.
With all the dialogue on the goal statements?
Yeah.
We can do that. I don't think we'll finish. Honestly, I don't think we'll finish. But it's your process. So if you want to do it that way, we'll facilitate it. I just don't know what the backup plan is if we don't finish.
I think basically we should try to complete. We should try to finish.
But how? That's what we're trying to figure out.
Yeah, but my, my thought, too, is if we break into small groups, we can, that can be the first stage of prioritization on there, too.
Well, and the other thing I would offer is that we need to, we need to finish with the draft work today. This is not the last time you're going to see this. Okay? So process going forward will be, you all create this. You get to, Veri Dunn feeds it back to you in a draft document. You get to have input. Then it goes to Jody and his team, where they look at everything that you've come up with, particularly the objectives. And they, as per Dave's point, they can say, oh, well, we're already doing that. Or we're this far along on that objective. You guys might not have known that, but they'll report that back to you. They'll also maybe report back to you some objectives that would be difficult to achieve for certain reasons. Not, you're not going to do them, but they bring back that data and information that you would need in order to think about that objective. And they will also create performance measures to go into the strategic plan to measure your progress towards your goals. So then they do that work, and then it comes back to you again, right? And you are the ultimate and final adopters of this plan. So you get the last say about everything that's in here. So I, I want you to think of the process in that manner, and knowing that if we can at least get to a draft set of objectives by the end of our time here today for all five goals, then we will have, I think, served the need for this group to be together to, to, to do that generative work. And, and it won't be convenient to try to come back together and finish that generative work. So...
Let's get to work.
Let's, it's hard to, because there's several different viewpoints about how this should be conducted. But let's do this. Let's break into small groups. Each group is going to take all of the goals. You're going to talk about the why behind you, what, why you want a particular objective. And when we come back out from those small group discussions, we're going to take it goal by goal. And each group will present their thinking and the why behind the objectives that they have suggested. So that way, OB, you can hear the why behind the other group's thinking. And then you will process together as a full group, like we did with the goal statements, those objectives. Okay? So we'll, we'll, we'll take it one by one. And we'll do that full group discussion after the small group work.
How many do you want per?
Pardon me?
How many do you want us to limit ourselves to per section?
I think each small group, limit yourself, limit yourselves to four objectives. And, and then when we come out together as a group, there will, there will be some similarities, I'm sure. And, and then we'll see what we, we need to do. And I don't know that we need to necessarily limit the number of objectives that go back to staff, because they're going to be able to tell you some of those things we're already doing. I guarantee you, there will be some of that. So let's just see what we come up with out of the small groups, and then we'll make another decision from there.
That works for me. The only question I'd have, and I hate to throw this wrench in, but I think it has to be looked at. There are objectives that are already being worked on from prior council strategic plans. And so at some point, we need to, and maybe that's not a today exercise, but at some point, we need to evaluate those things and say, yeah, those continue or those drop off. Especially, and I would anticipate when you get to list at the end of today, that you also share with us how some of these might overlap or conflict with what's in there. So that could be part of the decision point.
I think that's right. And Dave, you're making Sarah's point again, just in a little bit different way. I think you should look at those objectives that are in the current strategic plan as you're having your conversations, just to have that dialogue. Is this still, does this, if, if we're already pursuing this, does this align with this new direction that we're setting? Right? I think that's important to note those. So let's go ahead and break into your small groups. Question? Yes?
If it's helpful, I think if you have six in your binder, have the current objectives and a status update on this. It's the school report from the end of the 2019 course.
Okay. One's over here, two's over here. Let's start with 20 minutes. It's probably not going to be long enough, but we'll check in with you, and you can have more time if you need it.
Thank you for joining us today. We'll be getting started in about a minute.
Nancy, you want to take your group and walk us through what you did?
Preparedness and resilience, the first four bullets we felt could be mushed together and you have four votes. On the seventh bullet, create more structural business support system, that had four votes. And that was also hooked in with the last bullet, business rep or facilitator small business navigator.
So your whole group supported those two things and you merged them together into one objective?
Now, we did add one bullet and that was sustainable environment. But after the create and the business rep, the next one, reimagine the process of development, we had two, three votes for that. We had one vote for decrease the dependency on sales tax. And we think that's really a long-term because we can't just say that and do it. So maybe in the backs of everybody's heads as they look at how could business be done differently, we don't want to dictate, but that's just thoughts. Then proactive public safety, resolve graffiti, we had two votes. Attract police and firefighters to choose Westminster as their place of employment, that had two votes. Civilian reporters, report writers, that had two votes. Creative ways of looking at policing, that had one vote. Bolstering code enforcement, that had three votes. Supporting neighborhood organization activities, that had two votes. Increase slash double co-responders and the second one, or the next one under that, increase homeless navigators, those each had two, three, I'm sorry, they each had three. And then address car theft, one, and addressing speeding, two. Our understanding was we were going to all talk about community slash place, so we didn't do it. But we did add some things to it. We added neighborhood watch as a bullet. We added citizen on patrol as a bullet, that comes out of the police academy alumni. We used to have it and it was no longer offered. We added two-way communication for current historic and arts activities. Two-way communication to promote current historic and arts activities. Quality of life, we... Quality of life, we added a bullet, and that was pay for the dog licensing fees in general And all art stuff that was in this quality of life was, we moved it up to sense of community or place. So, first objective for acquisition of open space, that had four votes, three votes, three votes. We had create strategy for communicating cities' plans, that had one vote. Complete the city's plan for trail connectivity, that had two votes. Establish an arts commission, that had one vote. Engage and invigorate the historic landmark, that had one vote. And there were three votes for the dog licensing, being paid in general fund. You ready for the next one? Infrastructure. We didn't like the word complete the water treatment plan, we said address the water treatment plan, and that had all four votes. And the next one had all four votes. The next one had all four votes. And the complete comp plan up to date had all four votes. And then there was one vote for provide adequate parking, and one vote for conduct analysis that will help drive decision-making.
Thank you. As I listened to your groups and the other groups, there are definitely some similarities in between what you came up with. If I were to summarize what you said, for preparedness and resilience, if, if, if we were allowed you four, right, per group, per, each group got four for each objective, you clearly have three for that one if you go based on the number of votes that you had. So, so you would, one of your chosen objectives would definitely be the, the top four bullets combined on the mitigation and, you know, hazard mitigation and all of those pieces. The second one would be the whole business support system with the, the bullet on create a more structured business and support system and the business rep facilitator, combined you all four agreed on that one. Then the third one, which had three of you, was to reimagine the process of development. So those are, the, those are three of the four objectives, and then you had two other ones that only one person supported, but one was the sale, the decrease the dependency on the use of sales tax, and then the sustainable environment that you added, had one vote. So you have three very clear objectives that were supported by the majority of your team members on that one. For proactive public safety, you had two that were reported, that were supported by three of the four of you, and those were increasing or doubling the co-responders and the increase in the homeless navigators. And then you had a whole bunch of others that, that had two people supporting them. And so I think we kind of table that, so you have two clear objectives under that one that your group likes. We can wait for the other group to report out to see where, you know, those other pieces fit.
Could I make a quick note on that? Because for both of us that supported the attract police and firefighters, as their choice of employment, if you look at a lot of these other bullets, to me, those are things that feed into what make it a good department to work for. So I think those are, the way I looked at it, a lot of these things that we think need to be done, you know, probably need to be taken by Jody and the chief and looked at as things that they fold in, they're not necessarily objectives for our level.
That's great. And what's interesting, Dave, is that the other group felt that those, the, the one about attracting police and firefighters is a really high priority, and they'll talk about that, and that, so that kind of fits in with what you said. So I think we'll wait and talk about the sense of community in place last because that was the fuzziest one, and I think having some, some full group, you know, exchange on that would be really good. On quality of life, there were three that definitely stood out for your group. One was the acquisition of open spaces to, actually, there were three. Acquisition of open spaces and completing trail connectivity, well, and then there's that bullet, they're kind of the same, they maybe need to be broken out into two things, but then it was complete the city's plan for trail connectivity. And then the third one was the city, city paying for dog license fees through general fund. And then you had two others that had one vote, one was for establishing the arts commission, and the other one was to engage and invigorate the historic landmark committee or advisory board, I think it's committee, I left a word off there. And then on the last one, very clear, you have your four objectives that your, or at least three objectives that your group supported. One was the water treatment plant, the third was education on water conservation, and the third one was completing the sidewalks and the ADA compliance. Oh, and then the fourth one was the, the working the comp plan. So you do, you did clearly define your four preference objectives for that last one. All right, kind of with that as a summary, let's have the other group report out on what they did.
You okay with me, dear?
Yeah, you, thank you.
Okay, and then you guys feel free to add to this. All right, so under preparedness and resilience, we also felt that the mitigation of, or hazard mitigation should be one. We, we kind of looked at it more as a review, our code and maintenance practices to ensure that we're mitigating for any, you know, wildfires or other risks and hazards, and that we should, as part of that, promote educational activities to ensure that we are full, you know, our holistic solution thing. Okay, and then the second one that is in line with the other groups as well is having an overall business support objective that is focused on, you know, obviously, it's supporting the businesses, you know, the businesses in the community partnering and the, you know, to help upscale and reskill Westminster workforce and a business rep facilitator, all through partnering with the chamber, working with our school districts and community colleges and other partners to amplify our ability to do so and the reach. I also was working with the group to work out some, you know, when we talk about conservation and preparedness education, that that is in, integrated with our, sort of, some type of objective that articulates continuing our efforts towards sustainable environmental efforts through implementing the sustainability plan and then enhancing our conservation and preparedness education. So again, that theme of helping to educate our community. And then the other one that, I don't know if I had a ton of, you know, amazingness over, but wanted to bring forward the promoting, supporting, encouraging diversity of housing options that serve a range of needs and incomes, and looking at objective four D in the existing strategic plan. The second bullet there, which is continue focus on seniors, affordable, single-family, multi-generational housing through the comp plan and affordable housing plan, kind of keeping that, and then adding in leveraging city-owned properties to create opportunities for affordable ownership and other housing options. So that's, make sure I got everything on there. So that, that was ours. Going into proactive public safety, as Michelle was saying, yeah, we wanted to make attracting a really high caliber police and firefighter employment base as a priority, and in so doing, ensuring that they are well-staffed, equipped, and trained, that we're increasing our co-responders and our homeless navigators, and we even talked about increasing our code enforcement activities. So just doing a lot of things to support the needs of the force. And then we also has a second one, looking at creative ways to utilize our police resources. So that's where the civilian report writers might fall into, or any other creative solutions. And then, yeah, even like mental health days for police officers can go in that first one, again, just trying to support the overall police force and attract the best talent. Okay, and then the third one was partnering with the county to make services available, available for homeless and people with mental health and substance use disorders, but also kind of expanding on that and ensuring that our county partners are being held accountable for, you know, the, supporting our efforts for, for policing and, I don't know how you guys want to say it.
I think that was a sign.
I was more direct on that bullet point. If our, if our county partners are unwilling to incarcerate people, then we are going to have to join other communities and sue for compliance.
And that's where I think we already use, leverage our lobbyists that we hired within the city, I think it was the last budget cycle, is to actually hold accountable and push back where needed if we're not getting the support and services that we need, so.
Thank you, I did not write down your examples, so I was like, eh. Okay.
It's you.
It's mine.
Boo. Is it mine? Shit, I don't know, okay, all right.
Oh, sorry, I shouldn't.
Zap us.
Construction radio noise.
Uh, what was the other thing? Yeah, and just with, working with our partners to potentially look for additional partnerships that, again, can enhance the reach of our services and what we're trying to achieve, and, you know, including, I think, mental health services and working with our homeless community, and just making sure we're using best practices for that so that it's, you know, done well. And then sense of community in place, we did have, we did have things. We actually pulled the bullet that says, supporting neighborhood organization activities to strengthen neighborhood identity, into the sense of community in place. And with that, working with our HOAs and neighborhoods to improve communication and develop community building activities, and so that could be through developing a neighborhood organizing toolkit. And we also wanted to add into this, well, we didn't quite have the, the name for what this would be, but sort of expanding or reinstating our, our events that the community has long appreciated, and in order to create greater sense of connection among residents, and this could include working with other cultural organizations, again, working with partners to enhance our reach and ability to get things done. And a final one would be improving our city council and city, citywide community engagement and dialogue. So that was three for that one.
You should talk about your neighborhood toolkit.
The neighborhood toolkit, just, well, yeah, it's part of that first one with having...
I guess it's more of a tactic.
Yeah, like, you know, just helping the communities that don't have an HOA organize themselves and create ways to communicate and to support one another. So, other than just, you know, using next door, is there a more cohesive way to include everybody and ideas for how they can gather? Okay, so quality of life, we, the first bullet under, we totally agree with the first group regarding the acquisition of open spaces and could see just continuing some form of objective one B, which was preserving, expanding, enhancing trails, essentially, you know, if we have an acquisition plan, let's implement it, let's just see some more trail and open space connections occurring. We did also want to have a arts and culture plan completed that would address things like, well, arts and culture and public art locations and our public art fee, and looking at creative ways to work with the Grange or potentially other, even city-owned facilities to provide spaces for the arts, including theater arts. And I could see, actually, which we didn't address ourselves, but including historic landmark into that as under the umbrella of culture, or more specifically calling arts, culture, and history plan. And also under that plan, addressing the opportunity and giving, having a recommendation to actually establish the arts district. And then separate from that was establishing a citywide art commission, arts commission. See if I missed anything on that. Yeah, I mean, the trail connectivity, again, goes under the, along with the open space acquisition and implementation. So that was that one, anything, all right, keep going. Okay, so then under infrastructure, under the complete the water treatment plant, we sort of saw under four B, the existing goal or objective, build and maintain infrastructure, prioritizing resilience, resource efficiency, and stewardship of the city's investments, that in particular, the fourth bullet, kind of still stood, proposed the water and sewer rate fee that, you know, deliver safe, high-quality, compliant, and so forth, so that bullet being something that we could continue to work on. And a second one, I don't know if it's related or a separate one, I don't think we quite spelled that out for ourselves, but the provide education on water conservation was highlighted and so that, I'll read it out, provide education on water conservation, plan management of a natural resource to prevent exploitation, destruction, or neglect. I'd like to see that paired with just overall, continue our water conservation efforts for our, for the city, and that could be through our, our city facilities or parks or, you know, if, if we're already doing it, maybe it's not something we specifically call out, but I think there are some things already in the strategic plan that are kind of more of an umbrella direction. Then the third bullet, complete sidewalks, what we did is we actually put under more of a larger roadway and mobility improvements objective, where it would address things like sidewalks, and traffic mitigation needs and stormwater management, and ensuring that we are, as we're making roadway improvements, integrating all of those things and addressing all those things if they, if, if they need to be, or if they've ever been highlighted, we do it once. And so that last bullet of conducting analysis that will help drive informed decision-making was nested under the roadway and, and mobility improvements. And finally, separate, two, two other things, separate from that was addressing the comprehensive plan, making sure it's approved in a form that we agree upon. And then the last one being continuing to advocate for transit solutions.
Thank you. So reactions to what you heard, there was a lot of alignment between the two groups.
I wanted to point out one of the areas that we spent some time talking on, which was the arts commission. So I know the mayor and I had comments about the fact that we already have a liaison to the North Metro Arts District, and so to us, and since, that's where so much of the... the, I can't, what's the acronym?
SCFD.
Yeah, money goes to that group, that to us, it made sense, instead of reinventing the wheel, that we expand upon that partnership, as those folks are already connected, and I know in the past, if you've been around long enough, there used to be competing arts group within the arts district that didn't help it succeed, so it seems like an opportunity, instead of creating something new that we enhance that. And so we were hoping that, since Councilor Emmons is the liaison, that maybe she could give some light to what they've been doing and how that might fit into an overall plan versus a new commission.
Yes, so, that group meets Monday, or, not Monday, every month, and it involves more than just the commission itself, it involves members from the Westminster Chamber, it involves members from our education districts, from Westminster, from historic Westminster, trying to think of other entities that are involved, but they get funding through SCFD and other grants from Jeffco and Adams County for arts, and so they have already, and we work together well as far as pairing on events that are possible, and I believe they did a à la carte, a lot of art, combination partnership last year, where they brought arts to parents and children in neighborhoods to meet them where they're at. And so, they're already doing good work as far as arts in our community, I think that that's an excellent idea as far as maybe already capitalizing off the efforts that they're working on as-is. I will say that they're not established for public art, so maybe that could be something where we jump off of and expand upon, is that public art piece, but they're more or less with the arts as in arts and entertainment, crafty, physical beings, so, yeah.
Any other comments or reactions or sharing between the two groups in terms of the work that you generated?
There's one thing I would add to the, what are we doing, the sense of community, next?
Yeah, so that group kind of reported out a little bit more specifically what their thoughts were, we can go a little bit deeper on that one, since that was the one that was not as clear, and I think our instructions were quite clear, that group thought that they were going to go ahead and do the deep dive, and your group thought we were going to wait and do it as a whole group, so I apologize for that confusion, so yes, Obie, let's go ahead and go there.
So just wanted to add one to that list, related to what I talked about yesterday on equity, having an equity note as an objective, meaning having the city to provide, I'm calling it an equity note, it could be called whatever we want, but something that uses available data to outline the potential effects of a policy or a measure on disparities within the city. So when we have a decision to make, the city should provide us whatever's available out there to help us, to help to inform our decision-making.
Could you, can we get an example of what that would be?
Before he does, can I have you reread that, because I want to make sure that we captured that correctly.
So, the city to begin providing an equity note that would use available data to outline the potential effects of a policy or measure on disparities within the city.
Okay. Thank you, now go ahead.
I'm just curious to see a working example of what that means.
Yeah, so, in the state capital, they do this as well, where, when they have a decision to make on a policy, for example, I think there was one on roads, I'm trying to think of, there was one in transportation where any legislator gets the opportunity to request an equity note, it's called, and that would infer someone creating this list of potential impacts, so on various, whether it's race, or geography, or education, or health, or employment, or the economy, so meaning, okay, will this road negatively impact this one community because of air pollution, or whatever, that would be an effect of saying yes to a measure. Or would this road impact this cultural group because it negatively impacts how they would get around, because it's right next to where they need, it's, it would be built near an area where they wouldn't be able to get around, et cetera, et cetera. I think this would be a key way for this council to help influence future councils, actually, on southwestminster particularly. We've heard, we've all heard it, there is a disproportionate effect on decisions that we've made in the past that may not have taken into account southwestminster, or that has left them out, or that has not thought about them. This could be a one way of making sure that we at least get the available data and get informed before we make a decision.
Dave, I could give you a very specific example, specific to cities and the things that cities are responsible for, so, great example is the decision of where to put a new community center or recreation facility. So one, if you were applying some kind of criteria like Obie is suggesting, what you would do is you would look at the demographic data across the community, you would look at where you have facilities currently cited, and then you would look at the needs based on, you know, different factors, potentially socioeconomic factors, cultural factors, racial factors, ethnicity factors, using data to determine, is there a part in this city where there's a need and we haven't equitably addressed that need? And so, that would be a very specific example of something a city government would be doing, like citing a new recreation facility or center, or citing a new community center, and how you would try to apply equity criteria to that decision.
That makes sense for a community facility, or a city-owned facility, which I'm pretty sure that we go through most of that criteria already, whenever we look at things, I mean, I've heard most of the things that you just mentioned throughout development, but how does that, when this was brought up, it was equated to private development, and so how does an equity lens lend to a private development process and ordinances and rules that we have to adhere to?
I can answer that, because I do it all the time at Denver, so Denver has a equity impact analysis for all new large developments, and they're actually developing one for any project that's going to be located in a neighborhood where they've already identified that there's a kind of low, that score is low on equity, so they have an overall equity analysis for the city, and there are several factors that play into it. One looks at displacement, or the potential for displacement, which I think is real for our, you know, in the southern portion of the city in particular. Another one looks at access to opportunity, what is our, you know, what are incomes, what's the educational attainment, and there's a bunch of factors that play into these, and so they are measures. Another one looks at the mix of housing, in terms of both affordability and housing types, and then another, the final one looks at jobs diversity. And so, all of those play into the health of a community and their ability to access opportunity as a whole, and their potential likelihood to be displaced. So, those measures can be done as a city, citywide, and actually, I would love to see them integrated into our comprehensive plan, so that we have a good understanding of where is it that we have vulnerable portions of the community, or where we need to increase diversity in housing or jobs, and so have a better measure and guide to the policies that we're putting into place. And then, they also, so, again, larger projects can be analyzed, but with respect to particular city facilities or improvements, they've also developed an analysis tool, investment impact analysis tool, that helps measure the potential for impact to the surrounding community, both environmentally and for displacement, and then can help the community, you know, the community and the city decide, okay, if we're going to put a new facility here, let's make sure it's located to benefit the community, or we're helping to address potential displacement if we do that.
It makes sense, I feel like it's a level of bureaucracy, that I'm curious if there's actually measurable in showings that that's worked well. I mean, Denver hasn't been, couldn't have been doing that too long, and I mean, people are getting pushed out of Denver, so the cost of things, just in general, I mean, most of these are market forces, and so, my concern is always the same that we see when we're too prescriptive, say, in our downtown, and we're not letting market forces drive development. There should be that needs component of the market versus us saying, putting some sort of lens around it, and I mean, especially when it's something is subjective, because I have heard equity described so many different ways, as far as what an individual thinks equity is. So, my leaning is always going to be to avoid too much bureaucracy in our process and make sure that we are providing a fair process.
What if one step we could take as a group is we could have staff do a workshop with us on equity, so that we can figure out what it means to us, and kind of as like an initial next step?
I tend to, I will tend to echo some of Dave's thoughts. To me, when I look at this in a bulk, it sounds like central government planning of the old Soviet Union, which didn't work out well. Now, that's a very harsh analysis of it, and we do lots of government planning, but it's about where we put government buildings, it's about where we put government roads, it's about things like that. To apply it to what should be a free market thing, I mean, that's my problem with affordable housing. I think affordable housing is ridiculous, because it works the first time, and then they're no longer affordable. I'm sure you're know of the Denver one, where they sold single-family homes at affordable prices, and then the homes were sold three or four times more, and everybody forgot about the affordable criteria that were supposed to be applied to those houses, and then probably some decent real estate agent who worked looked into it and discovered, oh, we've messed this up for multiple sales. And how do you define equity? How do you do all those other kinds of things? It is a bureaucratic nightmare, and probably one of the things I most object to about it is it's done by the unelected staffs of cities. They get to stamp their view of what fairness is, of what equity is, of what need is, of what all these subjective terms are. Now, there are parts where government has to do that, but that should be done by electeds, and not by staffs.
Well, since we don't all have a common understanding of what equity is, I think it would be helpful to start there.
But I think that's an unfair assessment to say an understanding of what equity is, it's not an understanding, it's a perception of what equity is. To me, equity is equal starts, everybody gets the same shake at where you start, it's not equal results. I mean, equity is making sure everybody has the same opportunities, but we're all born with different things into the world, so we're going to have different results. I might start a race at the same place as Lindsay, she's definitely going to kick my butt in it, because I'm slow, old and large, so, it's, you know, that's, it's not a, it's a perception of what equity is to people.
Equity is actually, we'd hold Lindsay back, so you could start first, and you'd both be able to get to that end line.
And I don't, I don't agree, I don't agree with that.
There, I want to win!
I don't agree with that, though, that's not, that's not equity.
But the definition, actually, of equity is fighting the injustice of where we are all beginning, and understanding that some of us are starting from a place of disadvantage, and providing those with, in a place of disadvantage, with some additional assistance, so that they can get to that next level.
Then if that's what the understanding is, I adamantly disagree with us as a government using our force to do that, because it is not our role, it isn't, it's not the way that our society is supposed to work, it's not our system, and I would, that's just against all liberty and freedom, because then if I am better than someone else in a particular thing, then you're saying, I'm going to need to get held back, so that somebody who's not as good at me at something...
I'm not saying we're holding anyone back, well, that was a terrible example, what it is, is we're helping somebody get a step up, and that's affordable housing, that's a better education, that's like an education, giving somebody who has dyslexia additional reading lessons and attention and work, so that they can enter into society and be successful as well. That's equity.
Here is my other vigorous objection to that, okay? When I was on council, Adams County made a housing, an affordable housing thing, right? And Adams County applied strict criteria to who could apply, not everyone could apply, you had to be having challenges to apply.
Financial challenges.
There were 150 slots available, 4,000 people qualified, 4,000! And so Adams County picked 150 winners, and the other 3,850 people got the shaft from government, and I find that so wrong.
Wouldn't it be great?
And that's what affordable housing is, over and over and over and over.
And that's why we need a lot of it, that's why we need a lot of it, because there's so many people in need.
But, I like Dave of a free market and liberty, and liberty and free market means...
But you don't like homeless people either, so what, you know, like, we're at a point where we do need to just help address the housing crisis, so, you know, we need to do what we can to keep people housed, and to create opportunities to get them into housing that they can afford.
Really, where is it in our charter that's our task? I don't think it's any of our tasks.
The safety and well-being of the community.
That's a very wide reading of it, and you could park any truck in that you want, couldn't you?
Sure, there's probably other trucks to park, yeah.
Other people?
I think, I think we got off task here, it's not that we shouldn't have these discussions, but if, if we're focusing on our strategic plan today, in the broader sense, then we can have these discussions in a narrow construct, as we come up upon those, and how we then each apply those. So, we're laying out the framework today, and so, I would love to have a two-hour-long discussion about affordable housing, myself, and our place in that, but I just don't see this conversation as being constructive for today.
So, I actually have a suggestion, or actually a question, a process question, that I wanted to ask. So, when we were listening to what each group came up with, there was a lot of alignment between the two groups, there's a few places where there isn't, and there are individuals on both of those groups that I think are interested in including some objectives that maybe you don't all agree should be there. So, this is, since we're doing draft work today, and you're going to have more than one bite at this apple, my question is, could Barry Dunn take the objectives work that you've done, find the alignment between the two groups, and put those pieces together, also list the ones where you don't have agreement, and conduct a very specific work session with you, with the council, to work through those objectives that you don't necessarily have agreement on, or you're not clear what they mean, or you don't know that you want to include them in your strategic plan. Shannon and I can give you an extra hour of time today, if you want to stay, but at that, we've got to leave at three, both of us, and so, I think we aren't going to resolve the question about, and the differences of opinion that people have around equity and inclusion, and I don't, I would tend to agree with Sarah, that that is a topic that she could spend a whole day on, learning about... with Sarah that that is a topic that she could spend a whole day on, learning about how different communities have gone about that, what, what the city's role is in it. Same thing with affordable housing. We don't have the capacity to do that today or even necessarily the expertise.
Well, I think the question was, though, should we add that as a, as a thing? In my, at this point with the current context, my answer would be no. And if we don't have at least even a partial majority, are we going to add that to your work product is my question?
Okay, that's a great, great question.
Well, there are several objectives that only had one or two. Do we just throw them all out because we don't have a majority? I don't think that would be fair either.
At a certain point, it's part of the process, though.
So then we throw out all the ones that have one or two, not just this?
And this plan we're making isn't an all-inclusive, all-encompassing plan. It's guidance for what we're doing. So I think prioritizing it with three or four, or five or six.
It's this group's decision in terms of how, how many of these objectives you want to have come back. If you want all of them that had any support at all to come back, then you have another discussion. That's possible. This group chose to actually vote on them. Group two actually chose to vote on them. And so that's another process question. Do you, do you want to leave off the ones that clearly only one person supported? Or do you want them to come back for, for their discussion? It's, as facilitators, we don't have a stake in that decision, right? That's, that's, ours is the process. So it's up to you guys to make that decision.
I didn't keep track of the, the ones that we all agree on because between our votes and their votes, that's got to be pretty close to more than majority because we, we had four in our group, right? So we had several that already had four. So
That's true.
If you all had some, that's going to be five to seven. So if we can combine those, but in my past things, this staff can only do so much. And we can't load them up with everything that's on here. That's the tough thing about strategic planning. You have to stay focused. And so I, I would say anything that has none, or one, or two does not get on the plan.
Oh.
Unless, unless potentially there were three votes for one of them and two votes on that.
Oh, I'm saying you have to combine them and see.
Yeah, and I, you know, there's some things like the continued pursuit of affordable housing versus like dog leashes for, I mean, dog licenses, that on the weight of the impact to the community, I think one is greater than the other. So I, you know, there's, there's popular things to do, but then there's also potential impact and benefit to the community that we should consider as part of this. So I'm not, you know, a huge fan of dropping everything that only got one vote yet. I think it still is worthy of a conversation to identify, yes, what were the things that we all agreed on? Great. But.
This is where it does get hard because then it's like, there's so much, this whole weekend where there was clear consensus, right, amongst all of you. And now, when you get into the objectives, we're down to the things where there may be consensus by five of you, or there may be, five of you agree with something, two of you don't. And so that's a process question for, are we going to come back and talk about all of it? Or are we going to, maybe, maybe this is a place where votes do matter and, and you, you get to drive that. At some point, you're going to have to, you're going to have to come to a, a list of objectives for each goal and priority that, that isn't 10 objectives. Because the mayor is right, and as facilitators of strategic planning processes, you heard us yesterday, not more than three to five priorities. It's similar with the objectives. You get too long of a list and staff can't focus. And the other part is that rather than saying these are gone and never, never again to be considered, remember your objectives are a year or two out. And so you get to come back to these strategic goals annually and reconsider and say, okay, we finished these things. Now what are we going to do next? Are we done with this goal? Or do we have more work to do? And then what does that look like?
We have to three o'clock, right?
Yes.
Is there any way we could see this visually? I'm a visual person. Like see what we have on the table? We've talked about it.
We would need, Jen and I would probably need to take a 15 or 20-minute break to write this all up and combine it together. Yes, we can do it. We would need to take a break and give us the chance to create a document that we could put up on the screen.
Just so we can see what is being, what we're saying would be left out and what is being left in. Because to Sarah's point, dog licenses versus something else, we, we need to be able to prioritize and talk about it.
I just want to make one quick thing about affordable housing. I know there's some disagreement and then there's some in-between, I think. And so I, what I have not heard, which seems like a conversation about a, a certain criteria devolved into a conversation about affordable housing and those who like it and don't, and the different things that we could spend probably more than two hours on. But that's still, to me, is something that's not even being on new objectives list. We're already as a city doing some of that. So there's probably some future discussion about what the right mix of that is. Because I think that that's part of, in my mind, them finishing the work on the comprehensive plan. Because that's, you know, with what we have left to build out, what kind of mix do we want them to go after? So I almost feel like that's a separate conversation than today's task. And maybe I'm off, but I, that wasn't even one of the things as far as like what things we wanted as objectives was affordable housing.
Well, there's affordable cost of living, access to supportive housing, access to housing, making sure people have the opportunity to thrive. Now, I don't know, if we're already doing it and it's captured somewhere else, I, you know, I kind of, you know, what is the strategic plan? Is it literally just, hey, while you're doing other things, make sure you get these things done? Or how does the, because it seems like when we take everything to council, you're, you're weighing it against this. So I want to make sure your efforts are supported. And if you have things that are actually underway too, that we're giving enough umbrella for it to come through.
So we're still at a process question, which we'll, we'll work through. We've done it all weekend. We can do what Obie is asking for. We would need to literally take a break for enough time for Shannon and I to take all this information and put it together in a way that would show the modifications that you made, the things that you combined, and then the votes that it got. We could do that today. I also offered a suggestion that we do that and bring it back to you in a very focused work session to where that, that conversation could happen and we're not rushed to try to slap it together today.
I think that makes sense. And, and it isn't, you just, you get us where we have consensus. And then if we have some places that have three, but when you get to one and two, those for now are in another bucket to be determined at another time and place. But we can still hold on to them so that we know that they're there. So we can look at it next year when we come on. But for the fours and threes, where we have at least that much, let's look at those when you come back. And whether it's a Zoom call or whatnot, it just will be easier to see and to filter out. So what else do we have to do for today if we get agreement to do that?
If we get agreement to do that, we have two more things we, we can do with the time that we have left. One that we feel is very important. We would like to, and, and the staff really needs this, okay? Behind tab five, there is the existing strategic plan. And I know you looked at it a little bit when you were doing your discussion. But staff really needs guidance about having you go through this plan and look at the objectives and sub-objectives and say, what are the things we want you to stop doing? Right? If there are things that, that the council no longer wants staff to pursue, staff needs clarity about that, right? So I think we need to spend a little time doing that. And then we had one other thing planned that we were going to do with you today, but this could be done in a conversation with Jody and his team. So we had talking with you about the process for updating, evaluating, and reporting progress on the plan. And really, that conversation is easier to happen once the performance measures are done. And that is not something that you need Barry Dunn to facilitate. What we could provide to you, and I think this is a really important point, it actually goes to some of what Obie and Sarah are talking about. There will, your plan is a living document and you want it to have it be as clear and precise as possible. But things will happen during the cycle of that plan. You may have some disaster happen that causes you to have to revisit your plan. You may have an incredible opportunity come up that you never expected. And rather than the plan being a kitchen sink where you just, oh, well, that's a great idea. Let's just put it in our plan. There should be a clear process with criteria for you to use when you, when there, when you're considering something possibly new to add to your plan mid-cycle. And we have those processes that we've done with other clients. So we think that tool is incredibly important. Because you, any of you might get a request from a constituent or a constituent group saying, we really want you to do this. Well, then you would have to say, does it fit with our current plan? And what would it mean if we pursued that? Rather than just saying, oh, yeah, we're going to throw it under goal two.
So Michelle, I would appreciate us, just my thoughts, is staff continuing with what's in front of them. And then once we start solidifying what we have in our strategic plan, have staff identify, okay, this now fits, we see this task, because these bullet points are tasks for staff, right? Like the, we didn't come up with that. That's the objective that we came up with. So I'd like staff to let us know, well, you know, because the very first bullet point is establish quarterly public safety town hall meetings. Well, that's been established or working on. And we've also included that now in our new strategic plan. And so that's where I feel like, this is where the bridging between staff and council can say, okay, here are some things that we're already working on. And then have a cross comparison as far as, here's what was left out, here's what matches your current plan. And then we can decide from, from what was left out, whether it needs to be involved in the new plan.
Jody, would that work for you if we did that next step that Lindsay's suggesting?
Yeah, no, it makes a lot of sense, actually. That would be a really good approach for, for us. And it would give us time to work through and do a really detailed cross-mapping of, of the two. Because there are, and there may be some that don't perfectly line up, but we can, we can adjust. So I think we'd like the opportunity to do that.
Yeah, it sounds like if you did that, as Lindsay's suggesting, then the council would have that column of ones that don't necessarily fit. And then you could say, no, we don't want you to do that anymore. Or, oh, wow, that actually should be incorporated into our strategic plan. So I think that exercise would be easier with that step first rather than trying to do it today. But I just wanted to make sure, Jody, that that was going to meet your needs.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that, Lindsay. That's a great process recommendation. So then I think we're back to the mayor's suggestion, which is we, you're going to be looking at the fours and threes. Anything that had zero or one does not come back. Twos depend on what the merging of the two groups looks like. Mayor, do you want to vote?
I would say after you've done all of the merging, you take those numbers and anything under a three for sure goes into another. We aren't working on this currently. And the threes identify so we can see if we get consensus.
We can do that. Rich?
I, I have no problem with, you know, coming back four, three, two. Because we, you know, then we, we can, we can identify, is, is that two mergeable into something else? Is it already being done? And then it may come up in the side-by-side comparison. But I, I have no problem going down to the two spot.
Mayor, would, as a process question for today, would you like the group to vote on what you've put forward with Rich's modification?
Yeah. What, how low do you want people to go? 0, 1, 2, 5, 7?
I don't know why we would go below three.
Sarah?
One or two?
I'd go two.
Seeing that our process is four or more, I agree with Dave and say three.
Two.
And I would say three. So it's three threes, two twos.
I would change mine to three.
What did you have?
Two.
So we have four threes, a two, a one, and a one or a two.
I think the threes get it. So that's what we'll do. But we will not delete.
Right.
We won't delete the other ones. We'll put them in a column or underneath and saying, these were objectives that were discussed. There was some support for them. They don't go away. It'll be part of the document, documented process. And I think that there needs some be, needs to be some intentionality, as you said, Mayor, to when you come back around to update the plan in a year, that those objectives that were, that some people supported, that they get redisgussed at that, at that time.
I know for me, while we are having to go through and vote, we've got some heavy stuff that has to be done. It's going to take some heavy lifting for staff. We've got a superintendent, or I don't know why I keep saying superintendent. We have a city manager search that we're going to be starting. We have some big items. Plus, we need to start getting out into the community as we have promised. So we've got lots on our platters that I just think adding to staff's pieces that on things, it's tough. It's, I hate having, in some of the areas, I loved everything, but you have to choose the priorities for this point in time. And they are what they are. We, we see them. I'm a visual person too, so I need to see them. We need to have that list over here so we know it's there because things may look tweaking-wise or something next time around. But at least we have what has three or more votes.
So, Jody, I'm going to look to you again. So I think we've got a clear process.
Quick question on the process.
Yeah.
Are we saying that the, that you're going to come back with the restated, you know, the rewording of what, of the top of the three and above?
I don't think we're going to reword anything. I think what we're going to do is merge what the two groups did, right? And we're going to, we're going to go with, with votes based upon the vote that was just taken. Anything, when you combine the two, anything that didn't get more than three votes is going to be put on a different list to be considered later. We are not going to mess around a lot with the language. We're going to take the language, any language recommendations that are on top of what's already here and simply merge the two groups' work. We might have some fine tuning to do on the objectives after that.
Can you please read out the ones that are two, two and below?
Yes. Well, this group didn't quite take, this group didn't vote on all of theirs. Okay, so the ones that Sarah, Sarah pointed out, a couple of them that didn't have the full support of her group. One of them was on the, the whole affordable housing piece. And the other one, Sarah, was it on the, there was one other one, Sarah, that you pointed out didn't, didn't necessarily have the full support of your group? Which one was that? I know it was affordable housing.
Well, I wasn't entirely clear on, you know, so this would be a good question for the other folks in my group. Because I had continued, continued efforts towards sustainable environmental efforts.
That's right.
And with that, addressing climate action and integrating in conservation and preparedness education.
So in other words, their group approached it a little bit differently. They went for more of a consensus. And they ended up with two that they didn't get consensus on. So I'll read them, I'll read them for your group.
Yeah, so, yes. And my secondary question there would, would be then how can we, if we haven't even voted on it all, there seems to be a step missing, right? So we, we still need to vote then on this as a group, on what should be left out and what shouldn't. If the other group... If the other group didn't even do vote.
Actually, no, the other group did, they got to consensus on-
We talked about it collectively-
Right.
And then moved forward with X, Y, Z objectives. We didn't vote, like, down the line like you all. We talked collectively and then put forward the top three.
Yeah, they put forward their consensus, right? And then there were two that Sarah mentioned that she was supporting, and that they didn't have consensus on those. So rather, they put forward, other than those two we just talked about, the ones that their group supported as their objectives to report forward.
But shouldn't that group then vote on our stuff, since we did do votes?
Well, they have three votes. And what coordinates when they overlap and overlay the two sheets and say it's, in number one, we had those four things aligned for a top priority for us. If that overlays, the same for them, then that's got seven votes.
Yeah, because our consensus would be three votes.
Exactly.
Yeah, and then could overlay them on yours. And then some of them we chose not to address, or we combined them with another, and then there was a couple-
And some, some of yours had zero, right? Because you said that, we don't see that as a priority.
And some of ours that had one and two, if their three coordinates with this, they go on.
So, Obie, would you still like me to read the ones from your group? I'm happy to do that. So, under preparedness and resilience, I'll read only the ones that were one or two. Decrease the dependency on the sales and use tax had one vote. And then, an objective was added, under preparedness and resilience was sustainable environment, and that had one vote. Under proactive public safety, resolve graffiti problem had two votes. Attract police and firefighters to choose Westminster as their place of employment had two votes, but we already know that's going to go on the list, because this group voted three on that. That was their consensus opinion. Civilian report writers that are appointed by the court ensures community that a full investigation was done, that had two votes. Creative ways of looking at policing and use of police resources, one vote. Bolstering code enforcement, dot, 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 two votes. Supporting neighborhood organization activities to strengthen neighborhood identity, two votes. This group suggested moving that one to sense of community. That one may end up with enough support to be in the top tier. Address car theft had one vote. Address speeding, pinpoint the problem areas and develop mitigation measures, had two points, or two votes.
Quick question on the civilian report writer.
Yeah.
That had support from the other group, too, didn't it?
It did. And so they were folding that. They went, this consensus position by this other, by the other group was, they really liked the creative ways of looking at policing and the use of police resources. They folded, they folded in some of those other pieces into that.
Like us, we just didn't fold that one up.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
They did that. So, let's see. Your group did not do votes on sense of community place. For quality of life, the Establishing Arts Commission had one vote. The Engage and Invigorate the Historic Landmark Committee had one vote. And then, under infrastructure, Provide Adequate Parking had one vote. And Conduct Analysis That Will Help Drive Informed Decision-Making Regarding Transportation had one vote. However, that one is going to end up rising to the, into that tier that you're going to look at, because this group had consensus that that would be part of roadway and mobility improvements, including sidewalk traffic mitigation needs, stormwater management, integrating all of that when making roadway improvements.
Didn't the one on an arts commission kind of, I mean, it looks like we were probably going to morph into potentially looking at increasing the partnership with the North Metro Alliance? But between their group consensus and the one vote, that one also would go on the list, wouldn't it?
And what's that, that's the, what was the name of the alliance?
In, North Metro Arts Alliance.
Yep. I think if that objective is modified, then to that, it would be in there also, yeah. Does that help, Obie, to hear what those were? So you're clear, so there's clarity?
Yes.
Okay. So, wow, so we're, I think we're done. But I would do one more fine tuning on the process. Just see if this makes sense, Jody. So Barry Dunn will take this work with the direction of the council and bring it back in that way, merging the work of the two small groups. I'm wondering, before we come back to the council in a work session, if it makes sense for your team to do the side-by-side with existing plan, what we've got going, so we would come back and be able to discuss all of that at the same time.
I wonder if it would be better to do it in a two-step, where we first get this back to council-
Quickly.
Get it to the place where they want it, and then we can do, after that, the side-by-side and bring that back as a second step? Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, I agree.
So we don't have to circle back again?
Yep.
Right. You would get back together once on what, on the work that you did today. You would, and so it would be a very clear task.
A very focused work session.
Correct. And then after that, staff would then work with you to map out the two plans. And then we'd come back one more time to do cleanup on, on anything.
And we would, is your thought, Jody, that we would bring the performance measures, the draft performance measures at the same time?
The second, the second step, you mean? I think we could do that.
That would be great, because then we're bringing that, all of that back to the council. They're getting that final look with an, final time to ask questions about the performance metrics. Any additional fine tuning of the objectives, we clean it up, and then when it comes back to them, finally, they can, it's for adoption.
Yep.
Make sense? Okay. Go ahead, Dave.
I'm just curious, and I know that you're going to come back after aligning, but I did, while we were in between groups finishing up their work, I went through this list, because I knew there were some things that maybe clearly were driven by a former majority. And I'm just curious, and I'm not saying that we need to do anything, but there were a couple that I want to see if they're at least paused. Well, and I know that some were, like the Westy Rise. Like, I know that's paused, and I would hope that that would stay paused at least until we realign. There was another one that I have, two other ones I had concern on is the Harris Park piece. And then the work to change the MAC, which I believe those are both kind of in limbo. Is that accurate?
Those are good examples of where staff would like direction in terms of whether they are in limbo or moving forward or not moving forward.
So you're at least at the place where you know the ones that you're going to need more input before we do anything else.
In terms of listening to council for the past 90 days and the discussions, there are, there are ones for us where we are really paying attention to what you're saying and trying to read whether we're going to want to continue expending on certain initiatives.
And the only other one I wanted to ask about, because it's been brought up a couple times, and this is around, you know, processes, is the building under a certain acreage. That, at that, at this point, are there any that we need to be concerned about? Are we stopping that practice at least until we have a discussion about it? One of the things in here was some of the focus areas, such as Church Ranch, which is one that kind of rose to the top of some of those apartments that sprung up because they were able to be done administratively. So I want to make sure that there, you know, there's kind of a pause on some of that work, or at least we're hearing about it while we decide, as long as there's consensus, obviously. So I put that out to my colleagues to make sure we're actually giving clear direction if we want to stop development that currently could happen under our current policy, that we actually give clear direction, that that's what the expectation is.
Yes.
I didn't hear what you're, you gave two pieces, and I didn't hear the last one.
The last one is about development. So in here, there's certain focus areas. Some of those focus areas, such as Church Ranch, are ones where they've been able to do development that didn't come to council because of the acreage. So I just want to make sure that we, as a group, give that clear direction, because there's things in here that fall under that development that can be done administratively, that we're saying, "We don't want that to happen." And obviously, we have to do some work to actually come up with a new policy. But I want to make sure that that's, you know, if there's anything in the hopper, it comes back to us, and that we're given that clear direction, that we don't want that to go, unless I don't have majority support.
I thought you said something about the MAC.
That was another one. He said that that's kind of in limbo. There's a change at the MAC, as far as like, what the, half the use is where the gymnastics are. And so what I heard Jody say was, that's one that's in limbo that needs our input. So that probably is one, after we get done with our goals, that we could say, "How does this fit?" But, and I'm fine with that, as long as everybody else is. But the development one, I'm not fine just waiting. I want to see, is there things in there, you know, that are going to blindside us and that we're, you know, that it all at this point is coming to us until we decide if there's anything at all that ever shouldn't come to us.
I would agree.
Do we have an objective that, we know that was suggested in the article, about approving below 10 acres? I don't think we even talked about that. So why would we pause if it doesn't align? It's not even one of the objectives we're considering.
It folds into reimagining development, so it folds into one of the goals. And it's a current practice that has big impact on the community.
Wouldn't that fall under the comp plan update? Because that's where we identify what can happen everywhere.
It could fall under both of those for certain.
I think I asked, or maybe it was you that asked at a council meeting, if that piece could be looked at. Because right now, that's how the extension of the apartments from sync went on up to 112th. So you now have a sea of apartments there. That's how the 312 apartments are going in in retail in the midst of a promenade that is going to look atrocious. So, yes, it's been asked for. It was-
Well, the ones at the promenade were by previous council.
I understand that. But that's the reason why he's saying, should anything else? I mean, I don't, I have no clue what's in the hopper, so.
Yeah, it's hard to say what we actually would be able to, like legally, have purview over, if it's a project that's, I guess, guidance from, from staff regarding what is the scope that we would have access to, and how, what is the best approach? Is it the comp plan? Or is it addressing that specific 10-acre rule regarding what we are able to review? And the other thing is, we have, you know, like, for our, our specific plan areas, those areas are different from our other comp plan areas, because they are actually zoning. So it's not the same thing as just a comp plan. So, I don't know. It'd be helpful to have a full-
Thank you. There are a range of administrative authorities that staff has related to different elements of our land use regulatory process. For example, Councilor Nermella talked about our specific area plans, like the Westminster Station or downtown, where there's a specific area plan in place, and then within that, are very specific authorities granted to staff. Outside of those specific plan areas, there's the comprehensive plan, the current one being the 2013 plan, that also has sets of administrative authorities. And so there's two streams of administrative authorities. And the example cited, perhaps on the promenade, I don't know whether that, you know, whether a 10-acre change would have, would have influenced that one. So I wonder if maybe what we ought to start with is staff providing a report to city council on what our administrative authorities are in the land use area, and we could summarize that in a, in a, in a report to you. And then you could have a look at that and see whether, which, or whether any of those are ones you wish to alter. And then we would report back to you on how to alter those. So I imagine there are reading, readings, and, you know, ordinances and such that we would have to change with some of those. Does that make sense?
I think just adding in, maybe the other approach being the comp plan, getting to that quickly. There's one document versus a lot. And so if we have alignment over land uses, that's, I think, one of the biggest things that is causing the concern, so.
Well, I, I mean, I think, so it sounded like staff is going to come up with deadlines as far as these objectives and priorities that we set, correct? Is that how I understand it? Or is it council? Because I don't want five priorities with four objectives under each priority as, "Okay, go, and then we need it done now," right? Like, I want to understand as us as a council as a body, and I know it's coming back, I know it's a work in progress, but like, what we just mentioned here is like, what comes first? You know, is it the comp plan? Is it water rates? Is it, you know, so I just, I want to make that a clear expectation for council and staff.
Yes.
The, I think the clearest, the clearest path forward from staff's perspective would be to do the next two steps that we just described, which is to get back with this, to finish the prioritization work by blending in and producing that final, and then having this council review it. Then the second step would be, we would then analyze the new plan, the new strategic plan, with the old one, and figure out where all the ones carrying forward are, and then where the ones are that are either in limbo or dropped away. That would allow us to then work with city council on the prioritization of the new strategic plan. And that would be how we would assign the relative, the relative work and which priorities council would wish to place on it, for example. Because we can, you know, for, a great example being the comprehensive plan, we can bring that back to city council at any time in the current draft form, and then go through it and have the council give us any adjustments, tweaks, or alterations to that that they would, they would seek. So that's something that could happen relatively quickly. We could probably roughly around the same timeline, report back on staff's administrative authorities under the, under the current land use regulations and policies that are in place. And I'm not, I'm not trying to give a vague answer on that. I know that there's a, there's a collection of policies that affect what you're talking about, and they're different depending on whether we have a specific area plan, or whether we're not within a specific area. So there's two streams, and they have different, very different authority profiles.
Well, the other thing I'm thinking that the staff can do, Jody, and I'm sure that this is within your thought process, is when they, we get this cleaned up, and we're giving them, this is the direction from the council after we do your work session, they will be able to look at those objectives and say, "Oh, wow, well, there's some critical interdependencies here, and guess what? We're going to have to do this one first before we can do this one." And they're going to be able to look at those and say, "This is definitely a one-year objective. This is going to take us a couple of years to do." So I think, once we get that list, that final list from you, that in addition to doing the crosswalk, they will be able to give you that guidance. Did I commit too much there, Jody? Hit back if I, if I did.
No, that makes sense. I think that's, that's, that's the most logical way to move through the, through the work. And I think very quickly can inform, see, at this point, we don't know yet what the, what the council's final strategic plan priorities are. Once we, once we do that, then we can very quickly go through and help inform the discussion about how fast we can do those things and, and under what timeline. Because right now, we're looking at the old plan, still being active, and then all the new plan items today still being active. So now we have a, potentially a larger workload until the two, until the old one is set down.
Exactly.
So as soon as we can do that, I think we can really get back to reprioritizing our resources.
Agreed. So, which makes it, there a sense of urgency, right? And we can, we can help, but bringing this back to a focused council work session as quickly as possible, it's not going to take us a long time to turn this around. You've done most of the work. We've just got to do some of the wordsmithing and merging the things together. And so what's reasonable for the scheduling of this focused council work session, so we can keep this moving forward?
To get back to what Dave was asking, though, is there anything imminent coming to us for land use?
Or not coming to us that, under these guys, we would want to see?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, I was thinking of both sides of that question. I would have to, I would have to- Um, I have to, I would have to consult with our community development director to see what's in the pipe. Um, when we went into the Semper Gardens public hearing, there was definitely a, a strong theme that that was the last big land use hearing that would be before council in quite some time, which tells me that if there's anything remaining, it wouldn't be under the current stream heading into a large public hearing for council, that it would, if there's anything, it would be on the administrative side, and that's what I need to look into is, is what, if there's anything of that nature, uh, within the administrative approvals in our pipeline. But there was nothing, uh, coming of the, of the scale that we saw with uplands or Semper Gardens.
Well, I agree with what Dave is asking because it's that 10 acres that's going to bite us in the rear end, um, depending on what is approved. And just reminder that, um, it's our planning people that sometimes tell developers what they have to include, or they're not taking something forward. So we just, in, when we have those discussions, uh, around our plan, we need to be clear what, um, what things we see and our needs are, and, um...
Bless you.
Bless you. So, so that everybody's clear, because when I hear that, well, from a developer, that the planners said I had to do this, or it wouldn't move forward, what do you do as a developer? You put in whatever you're being told you have to do to move your project forward. So, um, that concerns me, and I just think we need to have conversations. But in the, in the meantime, the 10 acres, we need to have some say.
Or, and the specific plans. I mean, I understand the specific plans, and I think that's a really good example. Um, but you know, it's, they come back to us when they want some sort of incentive, and then I get to see them, but then if they don't want incentive, they just spring up in front of us, and that's, that's problematic to me. Um, I, I got a fair amount of, of, uh, concern and straight anger about what was put up in the promenade, and I was kind of caught off guard, and I really didn't know what to say, because I'm like, that's a really good question. I don't know, you know, I was as surprised as they were to see it go up. Um, I know it had been talked about in the past when I very first got on, because, um, that group specifically had come for some sort of EDA, and I don't remember the results of it. It was within six months of being on council, there was some sort of discussion with that group about an, an EDA for that area. So, um, I'd like to understand that better and see even if it's, you know, uh, uh, I mean, I imagine if it's administrative, it would be a smaller touch point to have it come back in front of council than a full public hearing, but...
Yeah, just to give some perspective, too, on the, um, utility of the specific plans, it's, um, you know, they, they provide a lot of guidance both to the community and the development community, and to city council, and everyone who's gone through a much more detailed process to figure out what's going to happen there. On a site like the promenade, it would actually be helpful to have a specific plan process because then you would be able to actually have community input into what's going to happen there, and then we vote on the outcome. So that's, um, and then the developers know what can happen there, right? And we know what can happen there. So that's why it's always good to have a plan versus in other areas, yeah, so...
You know, maybe I could help with this. Uh, we'll com, I'll, I'll commit today as a matter of priority to talk to our community development director and our city attorney to bring back to city council post haste an assessment of, um, city council and, uh, staff administrative authorities on land use matters, and we'll bring that back to you, um, as an information document. We'll get that to you right away. You can review it, um, and then, um, indicate to us, then, then, then it'll be mapped out, then you'll see, um, the different streams of authorities that are in place, and then you can tell us very clearly which area, areas of those you'd like us to, to modify. I, I would, I would want to make sure that in capturing the intent of, of the 10-acre discussion, that we don't inadvertently miss something else that's equally as large as, in terms of an approval that you might not be seeing also, or the other side of that as well, not inadvertently make a change that, um, we didn't need to make because it wasn't something that you were concerned about. So if we could, if we could bring that back to you, we can, we can get an assessment. And I do need the, the city attorney to, to have a look at it because there are areas where there's quasi judicial issues, and I just want to make sure that, that, that the attorneys had a chance to review the, the, you know, the material. I'll get back to you.
You make him earn his money, too.
So, what else do we have? I think we've already established, we have our process, we're coming back. I think we just need to figure out how quickly we can get that work session to happen. Um, we're, you will be able to have a conversation with Jody and, um, leadership, once we have the performance measures built around what is our, what is our cycle and process and frequency of reporting progress on the strategic plan. It will be easier to answer that question when we know what the performance measures are, so we can hear more about your expectations for all of that once we get to that point in the process. Does that make sense? Is there anything else?
Will the measures, will the measures be a separate session somehow?
Actually, those, the measures are going to be developed in, uh, Barry Dunn's going to facilitate that with, uh, Jody and department leadership based upon your objectives. So we'll use your strategic goals and objectives set by council to determine what the measures need to be, and then those will come back to you. They won't be final, you know, if you say, well, wait a minute, I don't see a, a clear measure for something here, and, you know, um, it also, I'm going to set an expectation, it has to be a manageable number of measures, because if you're going to give the staff 40 things to measure, they're going to be spending all their time measuring and not getting the work done. So we, we need to find those measures that really show progress and that show impact, um, and we don't want to just simply count things, right? Those aren't the kind of measures that we want. We want to move as close to outcome measures as we can.
Anybody have anything else?
All we have to say is thank you!
Well...
That's your airplane.
Thank you. I mean, so I want to say something to this group, because I know sometimes you get to this process when you're having to get to the objectives, and people get a little bit deflated because you can't include everything, and, um, I just want to say that the, the level of commitment that this group has to this plan and wanting to get it right is really impressive, and I do not want you to lose sight of how much agreement and consensus there is in this room about the things that you're going to work on. So I, I want you to leave with that and with ability to pat yourselves on the back as a group of seven different people who found a whole host of things that you want to work on together and that there was not a lot of debate or argument about. So, um, I just want to really acknowledge that, because that isn't always the case, and you spent, you know, two and a half days here together really agreeing on a lot. So, um, give yourself some credit. I think the way that you interact with one another is really positive, and I hope you can continue to use the six thinking hats as you move forward. Um, and just, uh, it's a pleasure. It's been a pleasure for Shannon and I to work with you, so...
Let me give everybody a last chance. Obie, anything to say for the good of the order?
Uh, I, I think it was a good, a good weekend. There's a lot of stuff, sorry, there's a lot of stuff that should be in there that I would have liked to see in there, that is not going to be in there. That's the, that's the disappointing side, but to Michelle's side, a point, there are a lot of, there was a lot of consensus on many other things, so that was good to see. Um, you know, again, I just wish that some of the other things that are pretty critical were in there.
Rich?
Uh, I appreciate the conversation. I'm glad we had this opportunity early, so, thank you.
Lindsay?
I appreciate, going through, what, two of these now, and kind of even a condensed version within the last year or so, I, I feel good about what we accomplished here. I feel, I feel like this is a true strategic plan. I feel like there's a direction, there's, it's not so many pages long, or at least not that I could presume, but, uh, it, to me, it sets the expectation, and then we're building off that. And so I thank Michelle and your team for helping us, guide us through that process, and I just wanted to thank my colleagues for, uh, the, the conversation. Uh, it's not always easy to go into the sticky situation, so I wanted to, to thank you for, uh, that dialogue and, and having that two-way communication.
Bruce?
I mean, to thank you colleagues, really thank you staff, and really Barry Dunn will get paid.
Jody?
We earned it.
Yeah, I would just say thank you to city council for, um, for the, for the weekend. We've got a lot of direction, um, there's a lot of clarity, um, coming out of the weekend, which I think is, is very affirming for everybody and will give us, gives us a very strong sense, sense of direction, and I think you will find that, um, this will really enable staff to meet your, uh, meet your vision for the city. So thank you.
And to Cody and to the team behind you that came and made this work with microphones and stuff, thank you. To our two police officers, thank you, and you know that I'm always sorry that you have to be here, but it was great to see you, and, and thanks for spending your day with us. Sarah?
Well, I also want to thank everybody, and, um, you know, I know that there are a lot of things that we can make some progress on for the community. You know me, I have very high expectations, so I'll just continue to bring things forward because, you know, I am, um, I still see some work that we need to do for the, for our community. So, um, you'll just hear it from me over and over again. All right, thanks.
And she does it with a smile on her face, with her eye barrels raised. David?
I would say thank you to everybody who's helped us put this on and participated. This is the third facilitation group since I've been on in my fifth year, um, and by far the most well-structured and best work product that I've been part of, so I think it was a good weekend, and I look forward to seeing it come back to us.
Thank you both. Um, you kept us on track, you listened to us mumble and jumble every now and then, but then brought us back to, to life, and the decisions are tough, be, and, but not everything can go into a plan because there's only so many hours in any given day. But as you said, it doesn't mean they've gone away, it just means maybe next time is their, their time. Um, when I walked into the house last night, and I was pretty high, um, energy, and my husband looked at me and said, I thought you were at a strategic plan all day. Because he's, he's watched me come home and nearly fall into a chair and collapse. And I said, I know, but it was the best group of seven people I've worked with as team that knew how to run a strategic plan, and we got so much done today. I couldn't get to bed till 11:30 last night, that's the reason I was able to write all those definitions and so at the same time, because I, I was, I, I was energized from leaving here after eight hours of working hard, and that says a lot for your process and, and for everybody here that's not afraid to speak up, give their voices, listen to one another, and we keep moving on. So, um, thank you, and I know for the audience listening, we had a executive session that has been posted for today. We have canceled that, it's at, it's now 2:05. We will not be having the executive session, that will be moved to February 7th at that, um, study session meeting, and, uh, so we just wanted people to understand why we're not having a, a study session and get that on the record. And so at 2:05, I will adjourn this meeting, and thank you, and safe travels home. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah.